I didn't even know how to do that.
Adorable.
I know. She said, "I'm afraid you're gonna forget what I look like."
Oh, my gosh. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I will call to order the Lafayette City Council meeting for May 20th, 2025, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Clerk Beck, Community Roll Call, please.
Mayor Monget.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wong.
Hello.
Councillor Barnes.
Good evening.
Councillor Friedland.
Here.
Councillor Gallegos.
Good evening.
Councillor Simpson.
Sampson.
Good evening.
And Councillor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you so much. All right, so we're gonna begin tonight's meeting with public input. So if you wish to speak during this time, please fill out one of these white speaker forms that you can access through the glass doors in the back, and you can pass it over to Clerk Beck here, and then we'll get you on the list. You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address before you do so. And we, I just wanna make a quick note that tonight we do have two public hearings as well. And so if you are here to speak about either Item K regarding the pre-annexation application for the 119 intersection, or Item L, the public hearing regarding special use review for, or special use review for an indoor recreational club or facility, we will call you up during the public hearing portion of the meeting. This beginning portion of public input is regarding all other topics, but you will have time to speak during those public hearings when we get, when we get to those items later on in the agenda. Okay, so for tonight, we will begin with Frank Archuleta.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I appreciate Council for allowing me to speak here this evening here. Basically, I'm here to speak about the Lafayette Cemetery and the 200 names that the city of Lafayette did not put in their database. Citizens cannot learn the truth if you do away with history. In historical language, there is perhaps no greater challenge than convincing the city to remember what it would rather choose to forget. True history frees humanity to reckon honestly the power of the white supremacy to distort, destroy not only lives and accomplishments, but historical memories. There is no secret that time does not reveal. It is now time for justice and the truth. Facts and evidence, we have it, and I've presented to you for two years now. This is about erasing history and the truth about the Lafayette Cemetery. The lack of accountability by the town of Lafayette, the lack of responsibility by the town clerks, and why? Hate, injustice, racism, and discrimination. It was all about power, folks, the Ku Klux Klan, and the white supremacists. Fred Audrey worked as a town treasurer and a town clerk for the town of Lafayette. He was still town clerk in 1962, and that's the first page that I gave these all here, all the information about Fred Audrey here, and basically where the states are, where he was listed as a delegate from Lafayette Claver to the Ku Klux Klan to the State Assembly in Colorado Springs, and this came out of the Lafayette leader, November 27, 1925. Henry Mathias was still the city cemetery saxon until 1963 in the town boards and the city council meeting minutes that I gave you all March 18. Also, 1956, Mayor Clarence DeMore was going to straighten out these burial records, the mayor, 1956. Henry Mortuary was on the East Simpson Street. City Hall was on East Simpson Street. All Henry Mathias and Fred Audrey should have done was went down to the mortuary to get these records, and they did not do it. Now, we must not sugarcoat the truth about plaque language about the cemetery. Our language is about the Ku Klux Klan, Henry Mathias, and the citizens need to know historical truth due to discrimination and the lax oversight on the part of town clerks. Council, please stand with us for solidarity and justice with Doug and my preferred plaque language from 12423. Also, remember the Samana family came in from California in the 90s and was able to get Henry Mortuary burial records, so why didn't Lafayette town clerks go down through the mortuary and get these records? This was and is erasing history at the Lafayette Cemetery, and it is a crime against humanity. On May 16, I spoke and had a meeting with Chelsea Pennington-Hann, the director of the Lafayette Historical Society, and the next time when we will meet with Megan Davis, we will discuss and share Doug's and my true historical plaque language and also the Lafayette museum language. Council, let us get this done and let us get it right and be on the right side of true historical history about the Lafayette Cemetery, and please stand with us in solidarity for justice with Doug and my preferred plaque language of 12423. Basically, what happened here, folks, the power of the KKK started in '23, and it was here still going on in '63, 40 years of it. And don't forget, 1958, the charter, which states that you cannot be on any state or city boards or commissions without being a registered voter. Boulder, Lewisville, Erie, Springfield, that's not a requirement, folks. Don't forget the information I gave about the Lafayette Fire Department. 1957, they would not allow anybody to be on the fire department if he was married to a Spanish person. This was a number, racism, discrimination, and segregation at the Lafayette Cemetery, and the power structure that continued. And it all started way back with Mary Miller, the white supremacist that came in this community here, and it continued for years and years and years. You must realize the trauma that the Latinos and the Catholics went through all these years. It is time, folks, to get a plaque with all the 200 names put up and tell the true story. We are in disagreement with the museum history of their sugarcoated language. And what I gave you on the second page here is all plaque language that we came up with here two years ago. That's all we're asking, but we will be meeting with Megan, and once again with Chelsea and them, and Lee, and go over language, but all language is a true language. You cannot sugarcoat and not tell the truth of what happened here in Lafayette. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Council. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Vicki Eulen.
Hi, I'm Vicki Eulen, 303 West Simpson Street, and I'd like to start by thanking Council and staff for your decision to join the home rule city lawsuit. I'm thrilled that you guys are doing this, and I'm really proud of you for your willingness to be a leader on this. I think it just reiterates that Lafayette is a leader in everything awesome, so thank you. As you might imagine, I particularly like the emphasis in your news release on having members of the public participate and be heard on land use decisions and development in our community. Thank you to Council and staff for your commitment to listening to the community and having the courage and vision to take on this vital fight. The second thing I want to talk to you is about the ADU ordinance on your consent agenda. While I think the changes you're voting on tonight are innocuous enough that they don't need an extensive public engagement process, or they've been required by the state, I'm really concerned that much less innocuous changes were discussed at your last meeting. As you may know, there was a robust public engagement process regarding new ADU regulations for Lafayette. This included surveys, workshops, and multiple public meetings and outreach. Many community members took time out of their busy lives to participate in this. So I was extremely concerned to see a letter from four architects suggesting substantial changes to your, our ADU codes. Sorry, just lost my place. Substantial changes to our ADU codes discussed at your last council meeting without any opportunity for public engagement other than a public hearing that night and an April 23 Planning Commission public hearing. And I think it's important you know that when the Planning Commission held its public hearing on this ordinance on April 23, nowhere on the agenda did it state that it actually was a public hearing. You can see that yourself by checking the agenda on the city website. So it's not a surprise that only two members of the public showed up. At your last meeting, planning staff said ADU code changes have been discussed at land use code working group meetings. This is true, but I'm a member of the working group, and I can attest that prior to this month, we have not discussed many of the specifics outlined in the letter from the architects. The architects' proposed changes were presented at our working group meeting last week. The group requested that there be more public input on any potential changes to our ADU codes, and I strongly urge Council to make sure this happens before any more proposed ADU regulations come before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Seth White.
Good evening, Council. Seth White, 311 East Chester Street. I was only gonna say one short thing, but now I have two more short things to add after hearing the previous speakers. First thing, I'd like to sincerely thank this Council, our city administrator, city attorney, and city staff for your recent decision to join five other cities in a lawsuit against the state of Colorado and our governor for their usurping of our rights as a home rule city when it comes to how we manage our development. I know you've heard from quite a few of us citizens along the way, and thank you for listening. You know, sometimes I take issue with things that happen down here at City Hall, but things like this are why I am still happy and proud to live in Lafayette, so thank you. Second thing, I am not privy to a lot of the research that Mr. Archuleta has done, but if he's able to show that there are 200 people in the cemetery who were buried in unmarked graves in a potter's field for reasons of race, or religion, or both, or whatever, I really do support the idea of at least putting a plaque there that acknowledges this and tells the truth about it. And the third thing is, I'm also part of the working group on the development code, and, you know, not all of the suggestions that the four architects were, that were presented to you from the four architects a little while back were terrible. Not all of them were great either, in my view, but what kinda bothers me is how much run and how much play they're getting. I know that three, at least three of the four don't live in Lafayette, and they have a vested financial interest in what happens to our code. It's their business. And so it's just, you know, when, when they, when they come in, you know, they're free to speak whatever they want, but when you have people going, "Oh, thank you so much," and then immediately goes to the Planning Commission, da-da-da-da, and we're gonna, you know, take this and run with it, it's just, it's a little surprising, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Grant Swift.
Good evening, Grant Swift, 608 East Geneseo Street. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My comments tonight are my own and not those of the code working group, of which I am a member. At the beginning of our most recent meeting, the consultants asked for comments about the previous meeting where we had discussed missing middle housing. I made a comment that was, well, that my input was that different areas in the city are going to be impacted differently. When I was asked to clarify this, I mentioned that some neighbors, neighborhoods in Lafayette have HOAs while those of us who live in Old Town do not. After the meeting, I went home and searched online, finding that Lafayette has over 50 HOAs. I presume that some of those HOAs have architectural restrictions determining what form of housing is acceptable in the neighborhood and thus would be limiting duplexes and triplexes. As a resident of Old Town, I know that several single-family homes within two blocks of my house have been torn down and replaced with duplexes. I'm sure others in Old Town have had similar instances happen. As I move through the city, I don't see this happening in South Point, Centaur Village, Beacon Hill, Wanaka Landing, Excalibur Areas, to name a few. I could go on. This apparent disparity doesn't seem fair. Years ago, city council then acted as the HOA board of Old Town when they decided what trash service Old Town was going to use. Tonight, I'm asking that you again serve as the, our Old Town's HOA board and help make the missing middle housing solution equitable throughout the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Karen Norbeck.
Karen Norbeck, 800 East Geneseo. Good evening. If you heard some weird sounds yesterday afternoon, it was probably me yelling yee-haw, woo-hoo, and yippee. This occurred right after I received the city notification titled Lafayette Joins Legal Suit to Preserve Home Rule Rights. Thank you for standing up for our home rule authority and the right of our residents to have their voices heard. Special shout-out, Councillor Sampson. I know right from the beginning, she wanted to do something like this. The icing on the cake in the press release was the mention of our Managed Growth Amendment, the call-out about Willoughby Corner, and the help the city gave the La Luna Mobile Home Park. According to the Affordable Housing Dashboard on Erie's website, out of all the municipalities that signed on to the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership goal of 12% affordable housing by 2035, Lafayette is the closest to meeting that goal with 9.56%. For those who are wondering, Lewisville has 4.8, Boulder 8.65, Superior 0, Longmont 6.35, Erie .09, Nedlen 7.63, and Lyons 8.99. We are walking the walk and proving that the state's one-size-fits-all hammer is not needed. As I've said in the past, we are an example of what can be done, and those folks down at the State House should come and see how we have done it and also what their heavy-handed edict would do to our city. City Planner Phil Keisler deserves recognition for all his work to determine what the impact of HB 241313 would be to our city. I can't imagine the contents of his nightmares after all the hours he spent on that. Again, thank you for taking this on and advocating for our city so strongly, and I don't think I'm the only Lafayette resident who is grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Susan Rewant, and please correct me if I mispronounce your last name, sorry.
It's hard to follow up on Karen, but I'm gonna try my best. I'm Susan E. Regan. I live at 808 East Geneseo. Is that right?
Oh, yeah, no, I was.
Okay, cool. I'm here to talk about the agricultural land, 119th, that they want to annex and hopefully not build on. Just a little bit of background, Lafayette was designated a bird city in 2019, the first city in the state of Colorado, the state of Colorado, okay? To be determined as a bird city, we have to demonstrate our commitment to conserve nature, native birds, species, and the habitats they need to survive, okay? That land down there on 119, 120th, that you all know, is vital agricultural land for native birds in Colorado, vital. Every season, winter, fall, spring, and summer. Migration time, the geese hang out there in the winter to protect themselves, unless so many shoots. They breed down there, the birds breed down there, there's male and females down there. During migration times, birds will fly over, like the sandhill cranes will fly over that area, okay? If that area is built with houses, all these birds are gonna go away, all of them. They just do that. That's what birds do when there's development. I'm gonna list a couple of birds that I've seen down there, so just try to visualize the birds. There's a lot of them, but I'm just gonna list a few. Karen is my wonderful neighbor and help. We bird, we bird together, so we know a lot of these birds. The big birds we have are the robins, the blackbirds, the white-crowned sparrows, the black-capped chickadees, the yellow rump, warblers, the says Phoebe, the housefinch, the western meadow lark, the morning dove, the eastern starling, the housesparrow, the northern flicker, the blue jay, the turkey vulture, the great-horned owl, who hangs around on the silos, our gateway to Lafayette. Swenson hawks, American kestrels, northern harriers, red-tailed hawks, cooper's hawks, mallards have been down there, bullocks orioles have been down there, vesper sparrows, Canadian geese, like I said, in the winter, spend a great deal of time in that field, rock pigeons, collared doves, kill deers go down there, eastern kingbirds, magpies, American crows, barn swallows, and cliff swallows, American gulfinch, chipping sparrows, American tree swallows, green-tailed tohy, brown-headed cowbird, common grackle, a bluebird I did see today, I also saw a western kingbird, and a lark sparrow. These are vital species that we need to keep in the city of Lafayette, our bird city that has become very popular. As a birder, when I go to, I went out to the migration in Walden celebration, and people just love Lafayette, and they like it because there's open space and there's birding, and there's a lot of birds, and they hang out here. So that's my, my take on, on that property down there. I do live at East Geneseo at the end by the silos, and I bird down there continuously. I meet people on the trails that just adore that property and love that property. I invite any of you guys, if you wanna come down and do a little birding with me, to see what really happens down there early in the morning. I know that's tough, but we also go down there later in the afternoon. If you wanna come down there and get some binoculars and look around and see what really happens down there, and then close your eyes and visualize a bunch of houses and what's gonna happen then, okay? So look around when you go outside and see what's happening, okay? So I invite you, if you want, y'all know my email, if you wanna come down there and look, but I, I'm just really passionate about keeping that land. Now, we have open space on the other side on 120th, and we have a little bit of open space off of Burlington. We need to connect that. We need to connect that and make that a viable place for what we are as a bird city, the first bird city in Colorado. Superior was voted today, by the way, which I'm very happy about, but we were the first. We need to keep working on that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Ron Spalding.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Ron Spalding, 1326 Alderada Way, Lafayette, Colorado. Sometimes it's nice to go later in the public input because I have nothing much more to add from Vicki Eulen, Grant Swift, or Karen Norbeck. They covered the lawsuit tremendously. All what I can say is, I am beyond thrilled that the city council and city administration are taking the necessary step, a lawsuit. are taking the necessary step, a lawsuit, to preserve our home rule authority. Kudos to you for having the guts and tenacity to do this. It's very much appreciated, and I 100% support this initiative. You heard, and it takes a lot of guts to do that. Thank you for that. And the next couple minutes, I was thinking about, we're gonna have a public hearing on the Gateway Project in a little bit. And for those who are in the room and maybe watching on TV, I was trying to look at the big picture, what's going on in Lafayette, and you all have a yeoman's job, I've been here 14 years, and what you have on your plate, starting the beginning of this year to the end, is unbelievable. And I just wanted to say that when we're looking at this annexation coming up, we have three other annexations, big. I mean, we've got the, you know, the Gateway tonight, we have the former Tebow property, the Range, which we're gonna be looking at, you know? We're gonna have the smaller one, Boulder Creek, and Silo Amendment Phase 2, you know, we're gonna be looking at. When you look at the big picture, tremendous impacts to the city, public infrastructure, and all that. I know you have to look at each one individually, but as someone who's been living here 14 years, wow. Secondly, we have a bond ballot issue, three major facilities that the citizens are gonna be looking at. Lot, lot of money, and the people are getting educated on that. So what I'm saying is, when we look at everything going on, I don't wanna be in your shoes, appreciate everything you're doing to look at it, but for the public, for the residents, for the officials, man, look at the big picture. Erie, if you all saw the news last night, is the fifth fastest-growing city in the United States for mid-range population. You know, City, Erie, we're friends of City, got, got good council and all, we get along good. They got the worst planning next to Lafayette and the whole Boulder County. When we look at the traffic impacts that's gonna happen on each one of these, we're at gridlock now for a certain period of time, it's gonna, lot of stuff to consider. Tonight, we'll be hearing, during the public hearing, but boy, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Laura Winfield.
Hello, I'm Laura Winfield, 407 West Cannon Street in Old Town, Lafayette, and I've been here 40 years. Progress. I grew up with progress back east. When I was five years old, what'd they do? From a two-lane road to a four-lane road in front of our house. Next thing they did, parking lot, Grand Union. Next thing they did, eminent domain, knocked down a house, made a bridge. In the end, they had a four-lane highway behind my house. This is all when I'm like five to, you know, 15, 20 years old. Lafayette has made so much progress in the last 40 years. There was no Grand Union when I was here, there was no, you know, King Supers, there was nothing in town. Everything on every side of Lafayette has grown. There's not much more space to go. So my, I have to thank you, I agree with the last speaker who said you have so much on your plate, yikes, thank you very much. The home rule move that you made is amazing. That will be amazing for our community if we can retain that, and you can have the vision that you've had all these years. The vision has been good. Everything is where it should be. At the top of 287 and Everapaho Road, that's gonna be a big deal. That's a mass transit site. I get it. Okay, so that's, but East 119th? Uh-uh. It's the only space left. We have to maintain as much open space there as we possibly can. It's been in the plan, I know it's been in the plan. I've only just come to the table in the last, you know, year to keep up with y'all, but that's the only part of town that's left to be open space. Everything about it is needed. I even go out that way every single day, and that great new intersection is, uplifts. But once everything gets built, it's gonna be a wreck, because 119th is not gonna be widened either direction, north and south. So there are lots to consider, but I know you can do it, and you're, you're up for the task. I really appreciate everything that the past councils have done, and this council too, and hope that we can make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm not seeing any more speaker forms in front of me. Just wanna reiterate, if you are here to speak about Item K, the public hearing regarding the eligibility of the annexation hearing, please save your comments for when we open up that public hearing, or if you're here to speak about the second public hearing, Item L, regarding the parking modification request, please save your comments for that as, for that time as well. But I do wanna check in, I know there's several folks waiting in the back. If anyone wants to speak during public input for any other topic aside from those two, you may come in and speak now if you'd like. Are any folks in person here that wanna speak on a, on a different topic? No? Okay. I'm gonna double-check out, to see if we have any callers online now. Seems like we do have one caller. So caller with a phone number ending in 046, we're gonna go ahead and unmute you now so you may speak, but if you are here for one of the public hearings later on, just let us know and we can schedule you for that time. So caller with the phone number ending in 046, you may speak now. One more time, caller with the phone number ending in 046, you may speak into the phone now, and let us know. Okay, so I'm not seeing any more speakers in person for public input nor online, so with that, I will close public input, and we will move forward with the consent agenda. This includes Items A, May 6, 2025, City Council Meeting Minutes; Item B, Second Reading of Ordinance Number 10, Series 2025, Amending Chapter 26, Development and Zoning of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Regulations for Accessory Dwelling Units; Item C, Resolution Number 2025-31, Improving the Intergovernmental Agreement with the City of Lafayette and the Colorado Department of Transportation Related to Maintenance of Improvements Located on State Highway 7 and 119th Intersection; Item B, Resolution Number 2025-29, Appointing Butler Snow LLP as Special Legal Counsel to Provide Legal Representation to the City with Respect to the Authorization and Issuance of Bonds and to advise the city on related election issues and setting the rate of compensation therefore; Item E, Resolution Number 2025-33, Appointing the law firm of Cockrell, Ella, Gillesney, Greer, and Ruland, PC, as Special Legal Counsel to Advise the City Regarding Water, Special Districts, and Municipal Utility Legal Issues and to Provide Legal Representation to the City Regarding Such Matters; Item F, Resolution Number 2025-28, Approving the Intergovernmental Agreement Between Boulder County and the City of Lafayette Regarding the 2025 Funding of the Energy Smart Program; Item G, Construction and Contract Award, Standard Concrete Inc., a Bridge Rehabilitation, 120th Street Over Coal Creek; Item H, Change Order Number 1, On-Call Utility Repair Services with Brandon Construction Company; and Item I, Change Order Number 1, On-Call Engineering Services with NG Companies. Would council like to pull any items? Okay, if not, we'll take a motion, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for discussion. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, that passes unanimously. Great. Okay, so we are on to presentations for tonight. We have one presentation scheduled, this is Item J, for our Land Use Code Update. We have Phil Kaisler here to get us started.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Phil Kaisler with the City's Planning Building Department, and it looks like Elizabeth, our consultant, is being led in, we're at capacity right now, so. The purpose of this agenda item is to update council on the land use code project. This is an effort to update, modernize our, our code. We last spoke with you in February, and so you'll be hearing tonight from Elizabeth Garvin with Clarion Associates. She'll cover some of the updates that have taken place since February, your last update, including some key themes from early working group discussions. She'll cover at a high level the latest batch of code chapters that were released for the community to start discussing, and then what's coming next in the drafting process. Did also wanna mention that the topic of accessory dwelling units was brought up in public comment, so that was discussed, and council had a general support for exploring some various recommendations at your last meeting. We did add those to the working group agenda last week. By the time we got to that item, it was really only time to introduce the item, and so the group was very interested in bringing that back up, so we're gonna follow back up with that conversation in June. In the meantime, staff will be doing some analysis to determine impacts, trade-offs, and so on, so that we can start determining how those, if they're a good fit to be in the code, and report back to council at the next touch point. So with that, I'll hand the mic over to Elizabeth, thanks for being here.
Good evening, everyone, this is Mayor, Council Members. I'm Elizabeth Garvin with Clarion Associates, Phil just introduced me, still that person. I'm gonna do a fairly high-level presentation this evening, it seems like y'all have some other stuff going on here, and we're in the process still. So just to bring everyone up to date, tonight, we will do the project overview, where we are so far in the drafting, provide some feedback from the working group on some of the key ideas that we've been discussing, including missing middle housing and neighborhood serving businesses. We'll take a preview look at the next chunk of code draft, development standards, and then we'll fill you in on what the next steps of the project look like. So just to remind everybody, we have four basic goals that we're working for in this code update, we wanna implement the comprehensive plan, Legacy Lafayette, we wanna make the land use code more user-friendly and easier to understand at all levels for everyone, we wanna work to help the city create more predictable development outcomes, so that's code language that ends up saying what it means, so we get to the thing everyone thought they were gonna get. And then, we are gonna right-size the development review process, and that's the last part of our drafting, I'm not gonna spend time on that this evening, but we'll come back around to it at our next update. So just to remind everyone, it's a multi-year process, we are in the third part of it in this drafting, and we have just a little bit more drafting left to go, and then we pull together the new draft into a full set of regulations that we start sharing with the community for specific feedback. So Module 1, this was the zoning districts and uses, we honed in on two key issues here that we've spent time with the working group talking about. First issue is changes in the current R1 and R2 districts to allow duplexes and attached homes, so that could be townhomes or triplexes, depending on the terminology that you, that is most easiest to understand. And so, the change here would be moving away from single-unit detached, and allowing a little softer or gentler density in existing neighborhoods, and just allowing these development types by right in new development. So after discussing it a few times, we surveyed the group to figure out where everyone stood. The question was, assuming that there are standards, regulations in the code that address impacts, we'll talk about those impacts on the next slide, do you support allowing duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes in existing neighborhoods? For the benefit of the room and the council members, this vote is not to say, okay, this is definitely what's ending up in the code and it's going to adoption. This is really surveying the working group to see if there are issues that we need to raise when we go public. If this idea is worth taking out to the community for further discussion, so we're in that place of, yes, we should take this out for further discussion, and what does it look like, and what kind of feedback are, will we be looking for over the summer and into the fall as we test this a little further in the community? So that, some of the early feedback that we heard from working group, and again, these are concepts that we'll take out to the community. Bigger, bigger concerns were about if we do more housing on a lot, does it feel big? So what regulations do we put in place to think about the scale of that development in relationship to existing development as it surrounds it? This is much more of an issue if you're putting duplex or triplex into a neighborhood that has only seen single-family development, one unit at a time. There are provisions in the regulations that start addressing that, and what we're hearing from the group is, you know, this fit idea, how does it cover the lot, how is it designed to work in keeping with the neighborhood, and the height, which is, you know, kind of another issue of how do these things go together, are the things that the code should address. When we go out to the community to talk about this, we'll, we'll reflect back, this is, these are some things that working group was worried about, we worked with them to make sure we could identify what we really wanted feedback about. We'll see what the public says, they, you know, could say this is great, they could come up with something different, and that's okay, we'll go ahead and take the ideas out and vet them. So in, in summary, big ideas that we can address in the code, so the design and the scale, the neighborhood compatibility, and the infrastructure and the lot use are all things we can address in the code. Affordability and ownership, we can address that somewhat in the code, in how we look at the design on the lot, and what you're allowed to do with development on the lot. Affordability is, is a mixed question of materials and lot usage and parking standards, so those will be all things we look at in order to allow for the development of affordable housing. The code does not in any way restrict whether or not it's owner-occupied or rental, that is a decision by the property owner. Last thing on the list, location and distribution. So the code doesn't say this is only for infill and it's only for new development, the way it's drafted, it says this is an option in the circumstances that meet the rest of the regulations. And so, that is something that we wanna get some more feedback also. So second issue, we discussed, neighborhood commercial, so think of this as very small commercial within an existing or new neighborhood. We talked about coffee shops, maybe small bookstore, something along those lines. So again, we're in this current R1, R2 zoning, and so, we're looking at, should we allow neighborhood cafes, should we allow personal services, or neighborhood retail sales? So we have an image here of what it might look like, and I want to share with council and share with everyone here, and whoever might be watching it or looking at it later, this is not a development application request on the part of this homeowner, this is simply an example. So this person may be with us saying, well, I wouldn't do a coffee shop, I would definitely do, you know, a clothing store, or leave my house out of this. But we wanted to show some of the things that we are talking about within the regulations where you could have a corner resident, a corner retail use of some sort. So same sort of conversation with our working group. First off, is this an idea that should have further discussion in the community? Do you support it? Is this something that we should keep going? And we got a very much more definitive, yes, let's keep talking about it? Definitely yes, sounds great, and then maybe with design and size limits, and so those are some of the things that we put in regulations. We heard no in both cases, and we had one committee member who said no, and that's an answer we, we anticipate hearing when we go out to the public also. And so, when we do hear that, we will explore, you know, tell us a little bit about what's going on with that no. With the neighborhood serving commercial, and I'm gonna slow down after this slide and see if you guys have questions, issues again are compatibility and design, right? We're making a change in how we think about neighborhoods, you know, the more homogeneous neighborhood, all houses, and the commercial goes someplace else, we're changing that now to the commercial might be in your neighborhood. Concerns about traffic, noise, and privacy, this would be things that we would, the traffic and privacy, we would address within the land use code, and noise would be handled by the city's existing noise regulations. And then, the conversation really was focused on community trade-offs. Is there an upside to allowing this? And does it benefit the whole neighborhood? Does it, you know, is it walkable? Is there a downside? Is there a downside to allowing this? What happens to the people who live next door? How does this impact them? And so these are the issues that we've been working through, lively discussion in both cases. And so we will go ahead, make some edits to the regulations and schedule these out for the community engagement that will be starting over the summer. So I think I'm going to stop right here. Yeah, it says questions. I am going to stop right here. Is there anything in more detail that you'd like to know, or do you want to hold on that until you get to see the regulations?
Any questions on that portion of the presentation? Counselor Sampson?
When you say traffic, are you still talking about delivery vehicles?
Yeah, we'll talk about the full range of traffic. And there are, just to expand on that a little bit, we have done regulations where we've limited truck size, or, you know, we've said, you know, it has to, you know, be kind of a neighborhood-size delivery service. We can put some of that in the regulations. I think we would also have a conversation with some business owners and, you know, ask, business owners similarly situated, and ask what some of their issues are with the neighborhood, just to make sure that we're covering everything.
Sure. All right. Other questions on this section? All right, I think we can move forward.
Okay, let's slip into preview. So Section, Module Two is another chunk of code, development standards. So these are standards that apply across a variety of different types of development, and they get applied based on the size and scale of the development. So we're in parking and lighting, outdoor lighting, signs here. So some of this is carryforward from the current regulations, and some of it is some update. Our content in this module will be focused on three areas, natural resource protection. So the city's done a lot of work in this area, so wetlands and water bodies, wildfire protection and wildlife habitat, and natural area preservation. So we're thinking about how, you know, how does development impact those critical areas or environmentally sensitive areas around us. Second grouping of topics are site planning standards. So you're on your site, and let's think about how, how do you connect internally and externally, cars, bikes, and people, pedestrians? Let's look at parking and loading. Have we right-sized that? We, you know, there's a lot of conversation around parking in the planning world. Is Lafayette doing what it needs to do to, you know, allow vehicles to move and park safely, but are we doing too much parking? So where do we go with that? Outdoor lighting standards, and then some tweaks to the sign regulations, definitely not an overhaul. And then finally subdivision standards. As the city does redevelopment, there will still be subdivision, and as you do new development, there will still be subdivisions. So we're taking a look at all of those. Big picture, in the natural resource protection section, we want everyone to stay tuned, to see these regulations that implement the Climate Action Plan and the City's Open Space Wildlife Plan. We're working in development setbacks from, from and between wetlands, streams, creeks, and water bodies, or two important wildlife habitat areas. We'll be working with the city to incorporate the state's new wildfire resiliency code. That is in the drafting process and almost complete. I don't know who's had a chance to look at that. It is primarily related to building and building code issues, but for the purposes of the land use code, the land development code, there are some landscaping and defensible space standards. So we'll be incorporating those. In terms of site planning standards, so how does site, how does development get designed on a site? The city has given a lot of thought to this. So we're primarily working with staff to make sure the code reflects city expectations. There will be a requirement for a circulation plan that looks into vehicular circulation, bicycle circulation, pedestrian circulation, and transit stops and availability and circulation that will come in with SPAR applications, with site plan applications. So allowing staff and reviewing bodies to get the big picture on circulation and to make sure we're connecting. There will need to be onsite, so internal pedestrian connections to parking areas, transit stops, and abutting sidewalks. We want to make sure, from a safety perspective, that pedestrians are able to move around all development sites. And then finally, there will be updated standards for sidewalk design requirements, bike circulation, and cross-access, so access between lots that share a property line, where cross-access would mean we're not putting as much traffic immediately out into a street. So this is definitely not sexy stuff, but good safety stuff and really important to how we move around. In terms of site planning standards, just continuing, we are taking a look at the parking and loading standards. We're going to recommend reductions for some minimum parking requirements, and we look forward to engaging in a conversation with the community about what does it mean to reduce parking requirements? Who can still park? Are we going to have problems? There's, you know, definitely a movement in the country to eliminate parking requirements, and that speaks to planning for people and buildings and not necessarily for cars. But we also know in Colorado that may be not the most realistic approach to this. So we're trying to come up with a middle ground where we have a reasonable amount of parking, but not too much, so we don't have those paved areas that really aren't functioning. We're also looking at maximum parking standards, so, you know, to make sure that we don't have some, some users that want to park for, you know, large holiday parking or park for just in case. We, you know, we want to manage how much, again, how much impervious surface we're putting out there. We are looking at expanding applicant options to adjust parking requirements. This leans into a little bit more of, there are many developers out there who have a very good understanding of how much parking they need, and sometimes communities request too much. And so having a conversation about, hey, my site doesn't need this much parking, and explaining why should be something that's open for conversation. So you'll see those in the standards. And then finally, the code will introduce minimum bicycle parking requirements, both short-term and long-term. And this is in an effort to make sure that the city's bicycle infrastructure is complete. Okay, moving, moving into the end here, there will be some new outdoor lighting standards that lean dark-skies friendly. So what does lean dark-skies friendly mean? It means we take the ideas of dark skies, so we're cutting down on glare, and we're cutting down on light pollution, but we're not going as far and as complex as the lighting standards are for fully dark-skies communities. If the city wants to go down that path, that's absolutely fine. We thought we'd start here as a starting place and then have conversations about it and see where people want to go. So again, looking at limiting light pollution, prohibiting certain lighting types that are more prone to light pollution, looking at lighting efficiency and shielding, and then the different types of lighting that we can do within the community. The goal here is to set reasonable standards that applicants can work with or say that they need exceptions and explain their reasoning for that. Sign standards, I said at the top, doing some minor adjustments here, really we're improving, improving, sorry, improving readability and incorporating more graphics. Regulating signage is a very visual category, and so there will be more examples in there, examples of how the city measures signs, types of signs that are allowed or prohibited. And so with the intent of helping applicants get through this process faster. And then finally subdivision standards. As we look at a city like Lafayette, where you're balancing new development and redevelopment infrastructure and infrastructure improvements is a very important category, so we want to make sure that we're in the right place for redevelopment, and we're clear about what applicants will need to provide to keep the city in good shape, to see growth long-term. So we go through the standards, looking for that. We anticipate detailed discussions with development professionals and with city staff, and we anticipate great questions as community members want to understand, how do we make this change over time? It is, you know, it's a proverbial working on a car while the engine's running, and we need to talk about it a little bit to make sure that, you know, we're fixing the right parts. Although I did see the O'Reilly's across the street, so we're probably in good shape there. Okay, bad joke. So wrapping up, next step, we've got Module Three, going through staff review, and also in three form-based code districts. We held those out to make sure we were in the right place with the regular districts. Our working group will meet again in July, and they'll talk about the stuff that I just previewed. We'll start community outreach late June, late June, early July. Staff will finish up reviewing that Module Three, which is administration, so we'll make that public also. We'll be back in front of you in July to tell you, share with you what we've heard. And also, we're now bringing our housing team into this, route policy research, and we'll be moving into the aspects of the project that are affordable housing-related, so you'll get to see that. That's it. That's us.
Great, thank you so much. I think we'll take a moment to see if there's questions on that second part of the presentation, if there are any, or about next steps. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about the lighting, and I understand that leaning towards dark skies versus falling right over ourselves with it. And is there an element of that that relates to how high the lights are off of the ground?
You know, I'm not the lighting expert at the firm, and so you don't want me answering that question, but we can look into it and make sure we get that question back to you. Tell me a little bit more about your concern, too high, lights are too high, and they're spilling too much light, or they're not high enough and we have safety issues?
They're spilling too much. And I, I'd just like to know what's the, what's the rationale for having them so high? And I'm guessing it's to spread lighter, you know, fewer lights.
Fewer, fewer light stands. You want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think the draft code has a cap on the parking lot lighting, but I don't know if it's addressed, like, residential lighting and things like that. And so if that's something that, if you're interested, we could, we could take a look at it, certainly.
And I'm going to show my ignorance about this, like, what about also lighting up the ground, like, illuminating the surface? Is that, is that something that is?
Doing, like, doing low-level lighting around trails and places like that? Is that what you're thinking about? Yeah.
Just, I'm just curious how, if there's something that can just keep them out of, up high.
Yeah. We'll go high, and then we'll, we'll also say, here's where we're measuring, and you can't be spilling across this line. So you can put something really high in, but you're going to have to adjust how it works or how it's shielded, because the neighbors don't need any part of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
The question, Counsel Freedom?
I'm curious in the stakeholder outreach, the community outreach coming up, are we including boards and commissions as part of that? I mean, you know, I'm thinking sustainability, resiliency, I'm thinking open space, you know, others. Is that part of the plan?
Typically, and I think we're just starting to put that whole schedule together.
Yeah, our initial kind of primary stakeholder group is the working group, and that includes a representative from each board, but we are starting to get some requests to go to specific boards, such as senior advisory board. I think we're going to next month's LoSa meeting, so we'll probably start doing the rounds on those, on those as well.
Right, thank you.
Again, this, the next couple of months will be primarily just working with the working group to get some, a draft done, and then it's most of the year that is spent with the broader community engagement. That'll also include boards.
And those boards are usually great for helping us get the word out also. So we'll make sure that they're invited to the public events in a way that they can email, share with anybody they want to.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you. All right, anything else from council?
All right.
If I may, just on closing, thank you, and then for anyone tuning in at home or here tonight, we would highly recommend that, when time allows, to Google Lafayette Listens. Scroll down to the bottom and visit the land use slash zoning code page. There you can learn more about the project, you can register to get notified around upcoming engagement efforts, and you can weigh in on the two key issues that were discussed tonight around missing middle housing and neighborhood-serving businesses. So we highly recommend and request that you do so, so we can hear from you. Thanks.
Of course, and thank you so much for joining us.
Have a great evening.
Appreciate it. Yeah, thanks for that presentation. Okay, well, that wraps up presentations for tonight, which brings us to regular business. We have two items tonight, beginning with Item K. This is a public hearing. This is Resolution Number 2025-30, making certain findings of fact regarding eligibility for annexation for properties generally located northwest and southwest of the intersection of Baseline Road and North 119th Street, located in Boulder County, Colorado, for the Gateway Lafayette Annexation, as noted in the Daily Camera on April 20th, 27th, May 4th, and May 11th. Just want to, just for the benefit of the public for tonight, as I, as mentioned, tonight we are simply looking at the eligibility for annexation. We're not voting on the annexation itself, or looking into any site plans or potential site plans of what may or may not happen at the site. Tonight is just ensuring that the application for annexation is meeting the state statutes and state standards, and to see if it's eligible to potentially be annexed. Thank you. Go ahead, you can take it away.
Yes, good evening. Well said. My presentation's over. Mayor covered everything. As stated, we are here for the eligibility hearing for the proposed Gateway Lafayette Annexation. My name's Jake Mitchell, and I'm the current planning manager. Quick overview of the agenda, I'll give a brief introduction. The applicant is here, and we'll give a presentation, followed by staff analysis, council questions, public testimony, any discussion council may have, and a motion. So as we all know, Gateway Lafayette project consists of approximately 77.5 acres at the southwest corner of Baseline and North 119th, approximately 24 and a half acres on the north side of Baseline, 53 on the south. It is completely surrounded by the city of Lafayette, with the exception of this kind of portion of unincorporated Boulder County of the northern property and Erie just north of that. So the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map Plan designates the properties as a housing area, with the hard corner of Baseline and North 119th being neighborhood mixed use. The comprehensive plan kind of further emphasizes that area by designating it a community gateway and a focus area, and then there are multiple green connections planned throughout the property. If it were to move forward, it would have to comply with a variety of different objective strategies and policies within the 14 plan elements in the comprehensive plan, and the plan also includes urban design principles for both the neighborhood, yeah, neighborhood mixed use and housing area. So how we got here tonight, we received the annexation application in early March, we held the finding of substantial compliance April 1st, staff reported, prepared an annexation impact report, and now we're here at the eligibility hearing. Now, this flow chart's a little misleading, and it makes it look like we're two-thirds of the way through the process, but in reality, this chart shows all the different development applications that occur. So everything kind of on the bottom and the right side of the page will need to happen. This includes numerous opportunities for public engagement at neighborhood meetings and public hearings, in order to get to the far right where the project comes across the finish line, annexed and fully entitled. Again, that's if, if approved. All right, so this is why we're really here today, tonight, to determine whether or not the application of the annexation meets the eligibility requirements in the Municipal Annexation Act. This is purely a fact-finding determination. It does not constitute final action on the annexation by city council, nor does it represent city council's position on the feasibility or desirability of the annexation. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant, and I'll be back up after that.
Mr. Arrows?
Yep. Good evening, council. My name is Tyler Sibley, and I'm with Kyroy Residential. I'm joined here by my partner JP Kasab and Charlie Smith with Paul Sinelli, who's our attorney working on the project. And, you know, while we know that this is just a finding of fact regarding the eligibility of our application and what, what could come next, I think it's important to give a little bit of history about who Kyroy is and what we're all about, right? You know, Kyroy is a second-generation family firm. We're headquartered in San Antonio, Texas, but founded our regional headquarters here in Denver in 2011. You know, locally here in the Front Range metro area, we employ about 150 associates that operate about 6,000 homes across the metroplex that range in all shapes and sizes from, you know, single-family townhomes all the way up to, you know, high-rise apartments that you see in Rhino and Golden Triangle and some of those different areas, and just about everything in between, really catering to all walks of life and really trying to attack a critical housing problem that we feel the Front Range is greatly missing. And so as we, as we think about how we move forward here, we appreciate your time and consideration as we continue to collaborate with city staff, Jake and his team that have done a great job as we've kind of navigated this project to date. I know we've got lots of work to do in terms of the technical analysis and continuing to work with the city on, you know, the impending code updates as we continue to move this project forward, but we appreciate your time and consideration as we do that. So from an agenda perspective, Jake touched on it well, you know, really the purpose of this is to go through and look at the objective criteria regarding just what statute says regarding our application and, you know, our know, are we, from a binary perspective, in compliance with, you know, what those statutes state from, from our application's point of view. We'll talk a little bit more about process and schedule, and then, you know, dive into eligibility requirements with Charlie and, you know, his legal background here on, on this process. Like Jake mentioned, you know, this process is outlined in state statute. You know, this annexation and, you know, any further, you know, zoning or PUD-type applications don't become final until they're, they're completely reviewed and approved by Planning Commission and City Council. You know, as we spoke about in our initial neighborhood meeting, you know, prior to the, the application completeness and application, you know, submittal process, you know, our process is rooted in, you know, neighborhood feedback, small group feedback, and incorporating that, that feedback into a holistic plan that we believe complements all the characteristics and components of the Comprehensive Plan and, you know, the makings of the zoning code that, you know, will continue to get refined here, the balance of this year and into, into 2026. Just to reiterate, the parcel and the location of the project, I think Jake touched on, you know, where this subject property is located, bifurcated by Baseline Road with 25-acre north parcel and a 53-acre south parcel. You know, a little bit more information here just regarding just the bounds of those properties on either side of, of Baseline Road. You know, Jake touched on this as well in terms of where we're at. You know, just from a, a neighborhood and a community perspective, you know, are, I want to make clear that our next steps are to continue to work with, you know, city planning and engineering departments to go through some of the technical aspects that we've continued to work with them on here over the last couple of months, as we refine a site plan and a series of site plans to go really engage in additional neighborhood meetings, to continue this fact-finding mission of, you know, what, what the neighborhood pulse is, right? How can we find a way to, you know, accommodate a holistic master plan development, right, that, you know, makes sense in accomplishing both the short and long-range planning efforts that so many people have put in place from a Comprehensive Plan and a zoning code update. And so just going through that while we're at the eligibility hearing phase, and our next step is a sketch plan PUD submittal. You know, we will not make a sketch plan PUD submittal until we, you know, continue to go through this neighborhood meeting process that will involve very clear and conversational site plans for us to really evaluate with the community members and, you know, our design team, just as we continue to refine that process, knowing that, you know, an initial site plan is just that, and collaboration through this process is, is really integral to, you know, how we get to the best answer, because we certainly know a lot about, you know, the technical professional aspects of, you know, how to build properties and operate properties. But, you know, there's a supreme local aspect here that is critical for us to understand and implement as we continue to advance our design of the project. This really just touches on, you know, what I just mentioned, you know, a continued focus on neighborhood outreach, neighborhood meetings, and small group discussions, right, as we take it from, you know, the technical administrative phase of, you know, is this application complete? Are we, is this property eligible? To how do we go, you know, illustrate and envision a site plan and a development plan that, you know, meets the spirit and intent of the Comprehensive Plan and the ongoing code updates, right? And so really, this is, you know, the, the beginning of the process in our mind, you know, provided that, you know, we're found to be eligible here to move forward, which we're really looking forward to in terms of engaging with the community and continuing those conversations that we've had here over the last couple of years. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm Charlie Smith, shareholder with Paul Sinelli in Denver, and I am here to walk through everyone's favorite part of an eligibility hearing, the arduous march through the state statutory eligibility criteria. I think it's anybody's heart pumping like a land use attorney walking through state statutes. So we will begin. The first criteria actually comes from the Colorado Constitution. It discusses that more than 50% of the landowners in the area, that comprise more than 50% of the land area that's subject to the petition, are on board. And in our case, 100% of the owners of 100% of the property have petitioned for annexation. And so we satisfy this criteria for approval. The next criteria, this is where we begin in the state statute, is that not less than one-sixth of the perimeter of the property is contiguous with the boundaries of the city. And it's just a fun math equation. I think we've seen a couple of times the map, that the property is nearly entirely surrounded by the city, with the exception of the one Boulder open space parcel. So we likewise satisfied this criteria. These next three are actually part of the same statutory provision and are substantially related. They all have to do with whether there is a community of interest between the property that's seeking annexation and the annexing municipality. And that's sometimes confusing terminology. The statute is helpful in providing some guidance, and it says that if the property has satisfied the one-sixth contiguity test that we just talked about, then by default, there is a community of interest that exists between the property and the annexing municipality. So we satisfy that criteria as well. The next two talk about that the area is urban or will be urbanized, and that the proposed property to be annexed is integrated with, or is capable of being integrated with, the city of Lafayette. And of course, this property has long been designated for potential annexation in a comp plan as part of the urban growth boundary. It's designated as a focus area and part of the gateway to the city. There's plenty of transportation infrastructure in the area that could support the development of this property for one purpose or another, or whatever it ends up becoming. And so there, the area will eventually be urbanized as part of existing city plans, and it's fully capable of being integrated into the city at some point after annexation. Also, sort of an interesting fact here is that in 2020, the city and the landowner entered into a pre-annexation agreement. The pre-annexation agreement says that both parties intend for this property to be annexed into the city. Part of the property was previously annexed into the city. This is the remaining piece. And that pre-annexation agreement says that both sides agree that there's a community of interest here, and in exchange for that agreement, the property owner agreed to not annex into any other city for a period of 10 years. And so the property is somewhat handcuffed and wanting to annex into Lafayette. That was the whole purpose of the agreement, but also has no other option to go to another city at this time. Moving on to the next criteria. So this, this criterion talks about whether the land, because of the annexation, is being divided into separate tracts. It is not. The whole piece is coming in. Or whether there is any land in excess of $200,000 in valuation that's opposing annexation as part of the parcel that's being proposed for annexation, and there's not. Again, 100% of the property owners of 100% of the property are supporting annexation. And the second criterion on this page is that we're not also duplicitously seeking annexation into another city at the same time, which we are not. And so both of these criterion are satisfied. The first one on this page is that the annexation does not result in a detachment from any existing school district, the part that's left out that would oppose the, the annexation. But in any event, there is no change in school district here. It remains the Boulder Valley School District. Second criterion is that the territory proposed to be annexed is not more than three miles from the boundary of the city. It's not. It's directly adjacent to the boundary of the city for most of the boundary of the property. And the third criterion is that the entire width of any street or alley would be included in the annexation. We're not trying to annex only one lane of a road or something like that. And that's not the case as well. So we satisfy these three criterion for annexation, and that is all of them. I'm sure it was riveting. But they are important criteria. Happy to answer any questions about them now or later in the presentation. As Jake aptly put it, this is sort of a fact-finding mission, the purpose of this hearing. And as you've seen a few times, there's a lot of process left to go to discuss what could happen on this property in terms of zoning or development. There'll be quite a lot of community engagement. There was one neighborhood meeting already. There has to be first one. That was it. And there will be many other opportunities for back and forth with the city and the community. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we'll do the staff analysis next, and then, and then questions afterwards.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. I think I'll spare everybody an overview of all the criteria. I think they were pretty well presented. But again, more than happy to answer any questions. Per our memo, we do find that the annexation is, it meets the eligibility requirements. There are some other state requirements that we also must comply with. State statutes say that this hearing has to be held within 30 to 60 days from the finding of substantial compliance. That was done on April 1st, so we meet that requirement. Similarly, they require, the state requires that it be posted in the paper of record, in this case, the Daily Camera, for four consecutive weeks. Those dates of publication were April 20th, 27th, May 4th, and 11th. So we comply with that. Lastly, the state requires that we notice all special districts, including the school district, and the Board of, the Boulder County Commissioners, and provide the county commissioners a copy of the annexation impact report. We've done all that, so we've satisfied that. And then, lastly, our code requires that we provide written notice to everybody within 750 feet and post the property along the adjacent rights of way. That was also done. So, next steps, if the resolution tonight is passed, the annexation and associated development applications will be processed in accordance with all state and local law. Many of the development applications require Planning Commission and City Council public hearings, and there are also, many of them require neighborhood meetings. Obviously, this time, we don't have a sketch plan in, so we haven't really started that process, so we don't have any dates for future public hearings. And just to reiterate again, the public will have numerous additional opportunities to comment on both the annexation and the development applications. So happy to take any questions.
All right. Are there any questions from counsel for either the applicant or staff regarding any of these criteria or anything else? Counsel Gallegos?
So I do have a question after reading through the report put together by staff, specifically about the elementary school impact. So why was that elementary school selected and not the new proposed Parkdale school? Is it because it needs to be a school that's already in existence?
I, we send it to the facility planner with Boulder County School District, and they tell us where it's happening, how that, how they determine that. I'm not exactly sure, unfortunately. I don't have it. I don't know if anybody else has a better, better response. But yeah, that's, that's the, the school that was cited in his email to me.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Friedland?
There was, there was a pre-annexation agreement mentioned, but I know in the documents, I think it wasn't mentioned, from what I could tell. Is it relevant at all? I mean...
Is the pre-annexation agreement relevant?
Yeah, is it? I mean, it's not tied to this eligibility conversation, or?
So the pre-annexation agreement from 2019 does have representations in it that are relevant to some of the criteria that the applicant's attorney covered. So it's only relevant to that extent, but the, the applicant still has the burden tonight to prove that all of the eligibility criteria have been met, regardless of that agreement.
Okay. I guess, should it have been included? I mean, if we haven't, at least, and I wasn't, I wasn't on council in 2019, I'm not sure what it says. So I don't know. You understand my question?
I think so. Well, is your, well, maybe you should re-ask the question. I mean, I could summarize what the agreement says, but it's not necessarily relevant to whether the applicant has met their burden tonight in tonight's public hearing on whether those eligibility criteria have been met.
Yeah. I mean, has it been entered into the record for this, for this process? Should it have been? Does it?
It could be if the applicant wanted to present it as part of the record.
Okay. But it hasn't been provided so far. I'm correct in my search?
It's not. And I have to look to staff. The pre-annexation agreement, is that included in our packet tonight?
No, it's not.
Okay. I didn't see that.
Okay.
So, and what the pre-annexation agreement did, counsel, is it was an agreement between the current owner of the property and the city at the time, back in 2019, essentially saying that the property owner agrees that for the next 10 years from November of 2019, that they will annex to the city of Lafayette and no other community. It does say that the parties acknowledge and agree that a community of interest exists between the property and the city of Lafayette. It also has certain agreements about the zoning that the property owner intends to propose if and when the property is annexed. So it, it's a, it covers those types of provisions. But again, it's still, it does not, it does not go towards whether the applicant has met their burden of establishing eligibility tonight per the statute. But it does contain understandings of the parties should the app, should the property owner annex this property into the city.
Okay. I think I'm, I think I'm following you. There were, there, there was, there was a land use designate, you know, a zoning designation referenced in the pre-annexation agreement?
Correct.
Was that consistent with what was done in the 2020, was it the 2021 update, Comprehensive Plan update?
I, I believe it is very, it's consistent with that update. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions so far?
Just to, just to follow up on that. The, the 2020 IGA with Erie, does that, does that cover this, this, this area as well, this property as far as growth boundaries?
I believe you're referring to the 2019 IGA with Erie, correct? So in that, in that IGA, there was an attachment that designated a growth boundary line, and this property is on the Lafayette side of that line.
So it's consistent, then, with what our super IGA that we entered?
It is. In fact, the pre-annexation agreement I spoke about a moment ago was entered into about four or five months after that agreement, and we were considering that agreement when we drafted the pre-annexation agreement. So they're all consistent with the IGA between Erie and Lafayette.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
All right. I'm not seeing any more questions. So we'll move forward with the public input. Once again, you'll have five minutes to speak during this time. Please state your name and address before you do so. If you do wish to speak regarding this, this particular topic, and you have yet to fill out one of these speaker forms, please do so. And you can access those through the glass doors in the back and pass it over to Clerk Peck, and we can get you on the speaker list. And then afterwards, we'll continue with the rest of the discussion. So tonight, we will begin with Rebecca Chance.
Hi. I'm going to be informal about this. I haven't done it before. And I'm a new, fairly new Lafayette resident. Before that, Louisville, and before that, Oregon. I now live at 455 North Burlington Avenue, which is Josephine Commons. So I'm right smack next to this. And I am the one Josephine Commons resident who is closest to the northern part, parcel of any of the residents. I'm in Unit 120, and that's on the ground floor. And I look out on the open space, and so I see all the wildlife. I have binoculars. And I know this is about eligibility, and I know they've, they're, they've ticked the boxes. But my background is in landscape architecture. I'm a retired landscape architecture professor from the Oregon State System of Higher Education and, and planning and design. And I just want to say that two things stood out to me that initial, in the initial presentation, that it was mentioned that they want to, you know, help provide housing. I think that's a bit disingenuous. I think the bottom line is a lot more important to these people than that. And another thing was that... And another thing was that, well, let's see, I may have momentarily forgotten it, but I want to say that even though this is specifically about eligibility, I think there's an overarching concern that these things not be looked at piecemeal. You know, eligibility, then this, then this, then this, you know, in this, as someone mentioned, this non-sexy way. The sexy way to look at it, I would submit, is to look at the story of Lafayette and keep that in mind through each portion of this. What is the character of Lafayette? What is the story of Lafayette? And coming from these other places, I've seen the distinct character, distinct from Erie, from Louisville, from, you know, all of these other towns, and that's why I live here, because I see that these people are interested in climate, in wildlife, in open space, and I've watched that open space function for the animals and for the people of Lafayette. And I just want to encourage you to not look at this piecemeal, but to keep the character and the story of Lafayette in mind throughout this entire process. Thanks.
Of course, thank you. Okay. Next up, we have Karen Norback.
Karen Norback, 800 East Geneseo. Good evening again. Everything about this project is in opposition to what Lafayette is and aspires to be, which is why Preserve Lafayette will channel the annexation for this development if approved. Our comprehensive plan says Lafayette is committed to the preservation of open space and wildlife habitat as part of its overall objectives tied to environmental stewardship. It is so important to this community that only parks, recreation, open space, and wildlife habitat span two of our four planning frameworks, environmental stewardship, and also community character. A community survey question asking what they liked about Lafayette resulted in open space and public lands and small town feel, coming in third and fourth, both with 71% support. The plan says open space also functions as a buffer from surrounding communities and preserves agricultural activities in and around Lafayette. That's exactly what these lands do today. They are agricultural lands that buffer us, especially our Old Town, from the growth to the east. They are the last pieces of the puzzle we need to preserve this valuable ecosystem that includes the best wetland on the Front Range and that rural entrance from the east so many of us treasure that tells us we are back home. In May 2024, you approved the open space and trails acquisition requests to Boulder County. This land is on that list and was described this way. With swift development occurring all around this parcel, securing it as open space for future generations is a high priority to the residents of Lafayette and Boulder County. A guiding principle in the environmental stewardship framework says Lafayette will demonstrate leadership in environmental stewardship and promote a healthy, sustainable, and resilient community by preserving open space and wildlife habitat. ClimateColorado.gov says Colorado's agricultural lands play an important role in fighting climate change. The goal is to store 1 million metric tons of carbon dioxide on natural and working lands by 2030, the equivalent of taking 215,000 gasoline-powered cars off the road. Our climate action plan says that through strategies aimed at preserving, restoring, connecting, and protecting national, natural resources and meaningful open spaces, along with increasing opportunities for carbon storage, the city prioritizes resiliency and sustainability. Under resiliency, the plan addresses environmental hazards and developments, and says, "The city will restrict development in areas that are at risk of subsidence from previous mining activities." I gave you booklets tonight from the Colorado Division of Reclamation, Mining, and Safety that oversees abandoned mines. A map shows the Simpson Mine is under this land and extends east under the Lowe's property, where the geologic hazard of subsidence risk was determined to be severe. In the booklet on page 26 titled New Construction, it says, "When serious subsidence hazards exist in undeveloped areas, construction of permanent structures should be avoided and to set aside subsidence sites for open space and other non-structural uses." A recent letter from a senior project manager at the state mining division says, "The Colorado Geological Survey recommends that the city of Lafayette submit any development plans to the CGS for a land use review prior to any development." There are three oil and gas wells on this undermined property. The developer told Preserve Lafayette he intends to access them by drilling laterally from a pad in Weld County. In 2015, two blocks west of this property on East Cleveland, the pavement collapsed as an SUV drove over a pothole, leaving it hanging over the edge of a 15-foot sinkhole over a 200-foot-deep old mine shaft. In March this year, another incident happened when a shaft opened up behind a residence home between Simpson and Cleveland. It took a Colorado Division of Recreation, Mining, and Safety crew almost three weeks to drill down 220 feet and fill the hole with cement. I will send you photographs. When the land shifts and settles due to a mine underneath, pipes and utilities can shift and break. Timbers can rot over time and collapse. Purchasing this land as open space takes the mining issue off the table, preserves an incredible ecosystem, removes an important item from the open space wish list, supports the community's desire for open spaces in our small-town feel, buffers our Old Town, and even meshes with our climate action plan when it comes to carbon storage. My request to you tonight is to please give staff direction to collaborate with Boulder County and Erie to create a new partnership and jointly purchase this land as open space. I think many in this room and the community would support you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Trudy Albertine. And please correct me if I mispronounced your last name.
Actually, I don't, I don't think I...
Oh, you had, you...
I didn't, but I do have something to say.
Sure?
I'm Trudy Albertine, and like my friend Rebecca, I live at 455 North Burlington, Josephine Commons, and I walk my dog from there to the dog park, and that open space is just beautiful. The grain waving in the breeze is just perfect, and I hate the thought of that being houses. I also understand that we've just redone the intersection, which, two weeks ago, at 3:00 in the afternoon, it took me two lights to get through going east. We can't afford that kind of buildings, people. We need the open space badly. Lafayette needs to be surrounded by open space between us and other communities. It's just the way communities should be built. The other thing, and please answer this question, does annexing this mean that we have this company from Texas coming in? Is that what this is about? If we annex, then we have this development?
So, we typically don't do Q and A during this portion, but to let you know, tonight we're simply discussing the eligibility for annexation, not the annexation itself. Tonight, we're not voting on annex, whether we're annexing or not.
Yeah. Because, you know, we're encouraged to shop locally, and the thought of a developer coming in from out of state just doesn't make any sense to me. Commercial properties at that corner? Where is that, where is the rent for those buildings going to go? Out of state? So, anyway, I wasn't planning on speaking, but...
No problem.
That's my, that's my...
Of course, anytime. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Vicki Eulen.
Hi, I'm Vicki Eulen, 303 West Simpson Street, and I'd like to present the signatures and some of the comments from our petition titled Preserve Lafayette's Eastern Gateway as Open Space. The petition intro says, "We, the residents of Lafayette, Erie, and Boulder County, ask our leaders to work as partners to preserve the 78 acres at the northwest and southwest corners of 119th and baseline as open space." The petition currently has 912 signatures, verified by Change.org that they're real people. Last night, I printed out the petition when it had 884 signatures, and the mayor has that. Out of those 884 signatures, 633 are from Lafayette, 35 are from Erie, and 35 are from Boulder County. Here are some of the comments made on the petition. "I live on Cannon Trail in one of the newer developments at the edge of Old Town Lafayette, directly adjacent to the land proposed for annexation and development. I understand the need for thoughtful growth, and I've benefited from it, but I'm deeply concerned about the pace of development in Lafayette, and this proposal simply doesn't make sense for our community. Our infrastructure is already strained, our water resources are limited, and this land plays a critical role as a wildlife corridor, something city reports have already recognized. This project would increase demand on city services, add traffic to roads that can't handle it, and erode the quality of life that makes Lafayette special. I walk the trail next to this land every single day. I see red-tailed hawks hunt in court in the sky. I see foxes, coyotes, and so many birds. I also see my neighbors walking dogs, riding bikes, running, bird watching, or just enjoying time with their kids. This space is alive. It's part of our community's daily life, health, and connection to nature. Despite what a Texas developer may think, this land is not empty. It is essential. I urge Lafayette's leaders to reject this proposal and work to preserve this land as open space for the current and future generations who are lucky enough to call home." Another comment says, "This morning, I was walking by this open space, watching a swarm of crackles flying in this beautiful formation, and then they landed in this tall grass, which is clearly their habitat. I was feeling really grateful to witness the beauty of their synchronized flight and feeling grateful for the small habitat provided through this open space. I feel so sensitive to humans destroying nature right now under a Trump-era presidency, since so much is at risk. Communities that are progressive and say they care need to prioritize wildlife over development right now. We need to protect everything we can and make space for nature to exist. Otherwise, our communities are going to become much less inspiring places. Please don't allow this to be developed. Leave space for things to be wild. It's depressing, but we are in the middle of a mass extinction, and unless we prioritize preservation, we are accelerating it. More than 1/3 of U.S. bird species are at high or moderate conservation concern, with 112 tipping-point species having lost more than 50% of their population in the last 50 years. Please protect this space." I'd like to close with two comments of my own regarding the developer's narrative that accompanies the annexation petition. On page seven, under Code Section Review Criteria, the narrative states that the city does not at present have all of the water resources necessary to serve the full build-out of the project. Instead, this developer is banking on future water acquisitions as climate change and drought intensify in our state. Under the Public Safety Section, the narrative says, "The phase nature of the project's development will allow the city's fire and police protection services to gradually adjust to increased demand created by the project. Voters approved a ballot issue in 2021 to pay for more fire and police services to serve our existing new developments. This made Lafayette's sales taxes the highest in the county. The city is again considering asking for a tax increase to pay for more city services and facilities. Rooftops don't pay for themselves. At what point will voters just say no, and our budget will have to be cut to pay for services for this new development? For these and other reasons, if council votes to annex this property for development, Preserve Lafayette will follow all legal procedures to challenge it." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Seth White.
Hello again, Seth White, 311 East Chester Street. So over the coming months, these developers will stand before you telling that, telling you that, per the comprehensive plan, you really need to annex this land into the city so they can develop it, okay? And that because it's in the comprehensive plan, on the map there, that must be what people want. Well, that's, and that's their angle, okay? The problem is that none of this is true. In the comprehensive plan, this area on East Baseline is shown as a focus area and a community gateway. So why exactly does the comp plan have a big star and a big circle around this land? Why was this land specifically marked for development during all phases of the Legacy Lafayette Comprehensive Plan Engagement and Update Process? Was it because the city of Lafayette's citizens were clamoring for it to be developed? No. There was no push from the citizenry at any point during Legacy Lafayette to develop this land, none. In my opinion, this land was so designated in the years prior to the comp plan being updated because the city was negotiating with the landowner regarding acquisitions of his nearby land for open space, which ultimately culminated, as you know, in the purchase of four nearby parcels for open space, which was outstanding, if you ask me. However, as part of this sale, as Counselor Freeland pointed to, the city executed a pre-annexation agreement with the landowner regarding the remaining land, and that's the land we're talking about tonight, because he wanted to develop it, right? That's the reason. So in that pre-annexation agreement, the city agreed to three major terms plus a bunch of other legal boilerplate, and those three terms were, one, the landowner must apply for annexation of the land within 10 years. Two, during that 10 years, the landowner will not apply with any other city or municipality for annexation unless we say no. And I want to bring up right now that the developer's attorney left out a key fact, that there is an IGA currently between the city of Lafayette and Erie, which says that anything south of Baseline cannot be annexed into Erie until, I think, 2029. It's basically the same 10 years that the pre-annexation agreement covered. And this agreement can be renewed if the administrations and councils of Erie and Lafayette so desire. It's set to, I believe, renew, auto-renew unless one person pulls out, but that's happened before with Erie. And you guys could act, and I think Erie's open to this, you guys could act to renew that sooner rather than later. The attorney also stated that the city, quote, "intends for this land to be annexed and developed," and I don't have it in front of me, but I don't remember seeing that word in the pre-annexation agreement, so I encourage you all to read it, because what's in there is important. Anyway, so, by the way, the city also has a Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Master Plan, which was updated a full two years before the comp plan, and in that plan, these parcels are explicitly identified as key properties that we want. And I don't think you're going to hear much about that from any formal presentation you get going on from here, but you're going to be hearing about it, I think, from the public. So in the end, I think this application is ultimately going to end up on your dais for a vote. Per the pre-annexation agreement, it will have staff support, and I expect that the Planning Commission will probably approve the sketch plan and the final plan as well. And so this council, or at least the council that exists after the election, will decide whether or not we annex and develop this land or pursue it as open space. So I want to say to the council and everybody in this room that this council is under no obligation whatsoever to approve this annexation. Zero. This development proposal that you're going to be seeing does not reflect the will of the people of Lafayette in any way. It simply advances the business interests of a wealthy Wyoming landowner and a Texas real estate development concern, and that's it. And as I said before earlier this evening, I really applaud this city's joining the lawsuit against the state of Colorado in the name of home rule and self-determination. I mean, that's going to take staff time, it's going to take council time, and it's going to take taxpayer money, and I'm fine with that. But you know what else you can do to assert our rights to grow and develop in a way that suits us? Say no to this thing, okay? This thing, this event here tonight is a formality, but when this comes before you for a final vote, as I expect it will, tell these guys to go pound sand and to say no. tell these guys to go pound sand and just say no. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Grant Swift.
Grant Swift, 608 East Genesee Street. Hi again. My comments tonight are my own as a Lafayette resident for the past 35 years and not those from any board I serve on. This annexation parcel illustrates our history, for it was historically used for both agriculture and mining, the two primary occupations of the early citizens of Lafayette. I would hate to lose those stories to development. I've asked the city clerk to pass out figure 6.1, taken from the city's wildlife plan created by the biologists at Biohabitats. I'm going to walk you through this figure. In it, you'll see wildlife corridors of Rock Creek, Coal Creek, and Bullhead Gulch, as well as open-spaced areas around Lafayette. From the key in the lower-left corner, we see the dark-green areas are the current Lafayette open-spaced parcels. The lighter greenish-yellow areas are the open spaces from other entities, mostly Boulder County. On the map, I drew a red dot showing the area of the current proposed development annexation. The dark-green portion directly to the east is the Wanaka Centennial Farm, open space. The larger area east of that is the Two Creeks Open Space, which was purchased jointly from Brimfield, Boulder County, and Lafayette. To the north of the red dot is the city-owned Great Bark, I'm sorry, Great Bark Dog Park and Great Park, a future ballfield site. The upper half of this dark-green area should be lighter green, as that portion is the county's Josephine Roach Open Space. With all that said, I am opposed to this current development annexation request because of the area's inherent wildlife value. This site is completely surrounded by Lafayette, correction, by Lafayette's open space. Whether we talk about form-based or use-based code, this land's language is clear. Its purpose is as open space, not development. Were this development to proceed, the adjacent open spaces' wildlife values would diminish. I would plan to challenge that annexation. When this land is eventually annexed as open space, the missing puzzle piece connecting our open-spaced parcels to the north with those to the east will be complete. And after some time, when Chuck's pond is refilled with water, white pelicans will once again return to Lafayette's eastern gateway. That's my vision, at least. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Ellen Lavardur. And please correct me if I mispronounce your name.
That's fine, Lavardur is fine. My name's Ellen Lavardur, 801 East Chester Street, Lafayette. I'm a former employee of Lafayette for 10 years, and I've lived in Lafayette for almost 20 years. And I live five houses up from Burlington Avenue. It's a very modest neighborhood, which is probably one factor in why developments are okay there, because we don't have a lot of power. This neighborhood began as bus drivers. They were able to afford the manufactured and mobile homes. And on, so I want to tell you a story. So just imagine you're facing this open space. It's, you're facing Burlington. On your left, on your right, is a row of low, single-family, single-story houses. On your left, for many years, was this great field. Lots of bees, lots of everything. Kids loved it. And then it got infilled by a developer, and there was opposition. But like I said, we are not in the power circle. And so now, it's urbanized. It's house, 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 house. And I'm used to it. And then you're still looking now at Burlington Avenue. And to your right is this incredible, lit all the time, halfway-done elder housing. I've heard lots of stories about it, but I don't know if it's true. But it doesn't have any integration with the neighborhood. It looks like hospital complex. And then I'm looking straight ahead. And that is going to be, for some reason, I don't understand why annexation and Cairo go together. I thought they were separate moves. But their website says that they specialize in high-rise residential buildings. That doesn't, that's not integrated. And that's to say nothing about all of the wonderful points that have been brought up about city services and water and climate change and the importance of wildlife. I have like a crickety garden, and I saw one bee this year. One! Not many, not many birds. We need this open space. And I am so grateful that you are bringing soup with other cities for home rule. And that's what we're asking for, home rule. And we may be a modest city, at least our little part, but it's still our home, and we love it. And the wildlife, it's their home, and they love it. This is a gift that we can give to our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, just like the Wanakas had that, all that land, and they gifted it to their children. We have something wonderful we can do. We can say, "No, we're not going to annex it." We can say, "We're going to try and raise money and work in concert with Boulder County to preserve Lafayette's identity." So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lawrence Lavardur.
My name's Lawrence Lavardur. I live with my wife. And she doesn't pronounce the last name right. It's Lavardur. The issue before us is part of a bigger societal problem. As others have mentioned, that we're in the midst of the sixth great extinction. And that, you know, that is not a Trump thing, right? That is not a Democratic thing. It's science. And the way you get to a sixth great extinction is you pollute the areas where animals habitate. You remove their habitation by building homes or putting in parking lots. And we have a preserve here in Lafayette. And we do, we do see great horned owls. They talk to us at night. The coyotes throw a party every now and then. We're all about it. I've seen the largest red fox I've ever seen walking up my street. And he doesn't live on our street. He lives over there. Yeah, others have mentioned the fact that the ground subsides in that part of the world. It subsides in my yard. I wouldn't want a high-rise built over something that could collapse. And we heard about a very critical incident in town. These are not fairy tales. These are real things, the result from coal mining, which went on extensively here. You know, the, besides being the sixth great extinction, we have climate change. We have scientific predictions that, unless things change drastically, and they haven't, and we seem to be in a political environment that has absolutely no respect for science, that maybe in 10 years, we'll reach a tipping point, after which, no matter what we do, we're going to get really hot. And how these things come about is because we make decisions we think have no larger impact, but they will have a larger impact. And the way we live needs to change. We need to appreciate that we need all the rest of the animals, the bacteria, all of that in order to have agriculture, in order to have oxygen in the right levels, in order to not have a fiery furnace of a climate. You have a chance to have an impact. Granted, it won't fix everything. But this annexation would be your calling card, is be real humans.
Thank you. Next up, we have Charlie Rosicky.
Boy, you guys have long meetings. I'm going to be less than five minutes, I'm sure. Thank you, I'm Charlie Rosicky, 107 East Chester Street. And I want to express my desire that the development doesn't happen just east of where I live, because it will make Lafayette less special if it does. What makes Lafayette special is that it's got an arts focus. Thank you for supporting that. That it has an annual garden club walking tour of Old Town Gardens, which this year is June 28. Thank you for supporting that. What makes Lafayette special is a farmer's market. Thanks for not giving up on that. I've been here for 22 years, and it looks like this one's going to stick. What makes Lafayette special is that I was in my backyard yesterday doing some gardening, which is 30 yards southeast of Tangerine. And I looked up, and there was a prairie falcon on the telephone pole. What makes Lafayette special is in the winter, when I walk around Wanaka Lake, and the cackling geese and the Canada geese come in over your head, you know, and descend on the lake and then go back in the morning. It's wonderful. I think this development would make those things less likely. They might still happen, but maybe less often. What makes Lafayette special is you can take your kids down to Coal Creek and teach them about American history by showing them Beaver Pond, Beaver Dam. Will the beavers still come to Coal Creek with that development there? Maybe, probably not. What makes Lafayette special is walking in the open space north of the rec center and encountering a coyote. Would that happen if this development goes forward? Please keep Lafayette special, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Suzanne Spiegel.
Good evening. My name's Suzanne Spiegel, and I live at 708 East Baseline Road, Lafayette. And I'm here tonight to strongly oppose the annexation and development of the land at 119 and Baseline, Lafayette's eastern gateway. We're living in an era of mass ecological collapse. Since 1970, global wildlife populations have declined by 69%. Here in North America, we've lost nearly, that's unpleasant. Okay, am I doing something?
No, no, you're good.
Here in North America, we've lost nearly 3 billion birds, one in four just in the last 50 years. The leading cause of the loss is habitat destruction from development. This land may seem just like a few empty parcels on a map, but it's a part of a living, breathing system. It connects existing wildlife corridors. It supports biodiversity and species migration. It buffers our town from unchecked sprawl, and it sustains a visible abundance of life. I walk on this open space nearly every day, and I see hawks, falcons, crackles, coyotes, foxes, red-winged blackbirds, and dozens of others. This land helps keep me sane on a day-to-day basis through a daily dose of nature. It feels vitally important in a world where nature is being crushed. To destroy it now would not just be unwise, it would be irreversible. This annexation directly violates key principles in Lafayette's own Comprehensive Plan and Annexation Guidelines. It encourages leapfrog development rather than thoughtful infill, and it will burden our infrastructure, and it undermines years, it undermines years of public planning and citizen trust. This land has been identified as a top priority for open-space acquisition. It's designated as agricultural land of national importance, and it serves as one of the last remaining gateways between urban Lafayette and the surrounding rural landscape, a threshold that defines the spirit of our town. If we're not willing to protect even this, one of our most ecologically and symbolically significant edges, then what do we really stand for? Under a national administration that openly devalues environmental protection, local governments have a sacred responsibility to lead with courage. This is one of those moments. Please deny this annexation. Let Lafayette be a place that doesn't just talk about sustainability, but lives it. Let us show that our values are not for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ron Spalding.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. As you can see, eloquent speakers tonight, you know, not supportive of this development. But I don't know if the comments really address this definitive issue you have to decide tonight. Very specific on does it meet the state criteria for annexation. And I'm afraid to say, with the presentation I saw tonight, it appears that it does. These comments may be further off at the next stage. However, I'm a little confused on the presentation. And I know I'm older, trying to read all this material, bed haring and all that, it's going crazy. But in the presentation that was given, it was five specific criteria. Yeah, it's, that comes under the state rule. And it's very limited, very specific. And I myself can't argue with it. The staff hadn't argued with it. However, where my confusion lies, and it's probably my fault. I was looking at the March 4, 2025 letter from the developer to the state. And on page three, it addresses, "The proposed annexation satisfies the act's requirements for annexation to the city." Section 30, Section 30- proposed annexation satisfies the Act's requirements for annexation to the city, Section 3112104." And we just saw the five criteria. And, you know, it was, it meets them, and the staff says it meets them. But where my confusion lies, I thought I knew it all, on page five, in item four, here's the confusion. It says, "The proposed annexation complies with the code's criteria for annexation, and the property is suitable for annexation into the city." Now, the code is something different than the five things we looked at. And I'll just, here's the confusion. "In addition to the requirements of the Act, Section 26S5-1 of the code, provides that, quote, 'An annexation request shall be reviewed against the criteria for planned unit development approval specified in Section 2618-5. To the extent that such criteria are relevant to the proposed annexation and may be used to guide, uh-huh, the planning commissions," maybe it's the next step, "and city council discretion in reviewing a proposed annexation. We, this is developer, have evaluated the proposed the proposed annexation and project against the criteria applicable to the PUDs," and it was 18 criteria. So maybe I answered my own question. That's the next step. And if it is the next step, I can take issue with every one of those 18 criteria, and you'll hear from me later. So maybe I answered my own. Thank you.
As as mentioned, yeah, the next step would be Planning Commission Annexation Hearing, and then the City Council Annexation Hearing, which once again, tonight is not the annexation hearing. All right, next up, we have Mark Sanzaro.
Okay, I'm Mark Sanzaro. I live at 404 East Cleveland, which is about four blocks west of this development. And I don't know all the legal technicalities that they presented. It sounds like most of the energy has been towards verifying that this is legal. And it and that probably reflects the values of the city council and the city staff. I don't hear a lot of energy being put into finding loopholes, finding variances that would allow the city to not do this annexation. And, you know, if you don't put any energy into something, you're probably not gonna find it. So that, I would definitely recommend that. I'm just an outdoor person. I do a lot, I don't spend much time inside. I like, many of the speakers here have said tonight, the open space, the ability to be outside in Lafayette. And I've watched over the last 15 years, a tremendous amount of natural green space being converted into asphalt and concrete. And that is, itself reflects a set of values. The values of people spending less time outside, more and more time inside on their screens, houses packed together. And if that's the value that you see for the city, then then you're following the right the right direction. But I think, as you've heard tonight, an awful lot of people here don't share those values. They want to spend more time outside, less time on the screen. The mental health benefits of green space are well documented in medical literature. And I think that every effort should be made to preserve the shrinking amount of green space in Lafayette. If you go, if you look at the creek path for the last 15 years, open space to the east, open space to the north, just a huge amount of development. There's just a lot of concrete where there used to be natural growth. So I think effort should be made to see what the options are. If Lafayette really wants to be an outdoor place, a place where people, which is healthier, and where people can enjoy the the natural environment, then every effort should be made to look for that option in state law and and push for that. I think that this annexation and the one at 287 in the southwest corner of Arapahoe and 287, I think these are two huge steps in the process of converting Lafayette from a very livable, healthy environment into a asphalt and concrete wasteland. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Adam Gianola.
Good evening, Council. I'm Gianola, 311 North Cherrywood Drive. I want to thank you for your time and consideration of this topic. We've heard a lot of comments, so I'll try to keep it brief. I reviewed the issue for us tonight in detail. It looks like this is really a check-the-box nature kind of kind of issue. And it seems to me that council's hands are kind of tied at this age. I don't live near the land. I've never personally visited this land. I barely, even rarely drive past the land. I live in another part of Lafayette, completely different part. I've lived here for 19 years. I'm still opposed to development of this property. I actually do believe the land should be part of Lafayette, but it should be part of Lafayette in our city and county open space portfolio. I hope the developer will take all the community comments to heart tonight and maintain an open mind. Partnering with our city, county, and community to preserve this land as open space is always an option you should consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Paul Resch.
Wake up, okay? Come on. Thanks for your patience. I asked the clerk if she could pass something out. And now, if you had anything, and you ask it this way, the badge on would be great. Sorry, I'm taking over the meeting on you, but you guys look like you're drifting off, man. We ready?
Go ahead.
I'm Paul. I am the 700 block on East Emma Street. I've asked you guys to have a copy of these documents that I put out. I'm gonna pass one out also to everybody. As you can see, some of you, I went around to 15 locations to find out the main entrances into the city of Lafayette. And you'll see pictures of all of these. They all have the same thing in common. They all have trees, grasslands, open space, wildlife habitat. Every point that you come into Lafayette, that's what you see. It's the same thing, no different at 119th and Highway 7. That's what you see. That's what we're known for. And that is a standard buffering between cities. You always give a little grasslands, you go give a little open space, a little wildlife, and that's throughout the country, except New York and Detroit, okay? This proposed annexation and building would not meet our current city standard or match the 15 other entrances by developing 119th and Highway 7. You didn't know you had a standard already in place, so it is not a gateway, City Lafayette is not a gateway city, nor does it have gateways. It's just a buzzword term, okay? We don't have gateways, we don't have a purpose here that other cities coming through. Once an open space is used for development, that's it. We lost it. We can't tear it down and redevelop it again into a wildlife. We already have it that way. The state is currently in the process of creating a mass vehicle corridor from Brighton to Boulder, U Highway 7. We're all aware of that. We've seen how it's grown. Somebody said that that's the largest two-lane highway they've ever seen width-wise, okay? And when it comes to 119th and Highway 7, part of that corridor is gonna go north to Arapahoe and then go to Boulder. There's also a continuance that's gonna go right through our city down Baseline Road. You guys probably already aware of that. This is gonna be kind of gruesome to see that going right through the town. So there's gonna be two avenues of a lot of traffic. They're gonna connect that to 287. Check my notes. And currently, they're working that East County Line Road, they're working on that bridge to widen that. You see the construction, that's the point that they're doing. 119th intersection's already set up, so they can continue that. So that's how the traffic's gonna go. Now, if you develop that, that is going to just make it a real It's gonna be gruesome right there. I mean, you're gonna have light, noise, air pollution, heavy traffic. The police department's already short on staff, as they well know, and they need all the help they can get, because our town keeps growing, and not in a good way. And this development is not in a good way. They have at least 13 openings, and it takes, as I understand, a year to get a newbie police officer in the on the road. Let alone the crime's gonna be just tenfold by having this development there. It was great that to hear that the city has joined the fight with the Home Rule. Congratulations, job well done. We, as the citizens, support you in that effort. We just hope that the city can support its citizens by saying no to the annexation and development of 119th and Highway 7. That's it. Now you guys are awake. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right, next up is Carly Hansen.
Oh, I apologize. Sorry, sorry to interrupt, mayor. I do know that we've gotten two handouts from the public, and it's important that the annexor also get a copy of these. And so I wanted to either give them my copies or make sure that, okay, so I'll have the planning director give my copies to the annexor. If anyone else in the public tonight, mayor, has a handout for council, I would ask that they also provide a copy to the annexor. They have a right to see whatever's entered into the record this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hansen.
Hi, I'm Carly Hansen, 672 South Vermont Avenue. I was born in Denver. I graduated from Lakewood High. In my twenties and early thirties, I lived in the New York City area and Boston area. When I was working in Boston, and it was actually the North Shore area, during that time, that part of the country was going through massive growth like we are. And I would speak to long-term residents, and they would have a lot of regrets about the building that was going on, just as we are. And I think it's important for us to to recognize that we're building our future. And and you know, you all know that. So coming back here, you know, I have memories of of, you know, Colorado or the Front Range, anyway, of being small towns linked together with a lot of open space in between. That's all expanded, and we're losing, when we we expand like that, we're losing the links to the native and natural heritage and areas. And so by doing this, by building this, and I'm losing my train of thought, I'm sorry, we're continuing continuing to break the links. So I was a, I attended the the neighborhood meeting at Confluence, and one thing I said is that this is a hard no for me. And it's a hard no because their plan really didn't mention anything about wildlife. And with all due respect, the criteria is shallow and narrow in scope. There's way more to life outside of that criteria. And we need to bring that in if we're gonna make criteria, things to meet, or things that have to meet criteria. We have to include wildlife. We have to include, you know, the land under the surface where the microbiomes are. In my opinion, I don't want to see anything on that land unless we are putting in native plant seeds, native plants, native shrubs. And it's an opportunity to to have our, the children learn about, learn respect for our land and and learn respect for the environment. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Hall.
Thanks for your time. You're patient. I only found out about this meeting this morning on my way to my yoga class, so I don't I don't have a lot of preparation, but I have a lot of heart. And I want to first say that I I am not coming from a, in opposition to anyone who has spoken tonight. These are people that I have a lot of respect for and a lot of respect for how how much they were able to tell you about the history in Lafayette. I just bring a different perspective. We're talking about annexation, and my passion is connectivity. And those are wildlife corridors and human corridors. Where do humans live? And how do humans live among people who are not the same as they are in terms of their socioeconomic status and whatever? That we can be, we can be connected across differences, and that's really important to me. My heart broke when the Burlington Barrier went up, is what I call this. So there's a fence along Burlington Avenue, and I don't know if it's avenue, street, whatever, that no longer allows for any access to the east, where I used to go to the wetlands that was there, and the wetlands that could be there again. And my vision is that connectivity for humans, should there be housing on the other side of that, is is not possible. There's a there's a barrier there. And it used to be that there was a gate there at the end of Simpson Street. So you could go, you could, if there were a gate there now, the people living on the other side could walk down Simpson Street and take part in the the wonderful local restaurants and and all the things that are happening on public road. There's even a big new farmer's market that's really very successful on its first day. So so my vision is is actually, eventually, I would be asking you, city council, to put a gate back in that fence, and then I would be asking the developer to, there is a stream that still runs right through where the wetlands were. They're not necessarily dried up. It's a question of where where the water goes, and it's seasonal and that kind of stuff. But there's the potential for having a lovely new version of the wetlands that were there, where the birds were and all the other animals were, yet to survive. And and it would be connecting the people who live over there with the people who live in Old Town, which is where I live. I live on Emma, I forgot to tell you that. Been living on East Emma for 25 years, and in Lafayette before that as well. So it's a, it's a vision of connectivity and of people to be able to move in from public road out to the housing and the various kinds of housing. I was involved in something I'm very, very proud of, which is the Willoughby-Karner Project, and that's where I take my evening walks, because I'm so proud that we could build a beautiful, it's not all done yet, but sustainable development for people who needed affordable housing. And I think the proposed development probably isn't gonna be affordable, but it's also gonna have a wide range of pricing. And I, when I came in tonight, there was this thing about the missing middle up there, and I think that's, that's a piece of it. So and then I wanted to talk a little bit about wildlife connectivity. Just east of 120th at the Flag Park Trailhead, which is my other favorite place to walk, is where the connectivity is. It exists for wildlife and for humans. That is an incredibly interesting historic area where the the canyons that are still being formed there and the and the strata of the of the rocks tell a story about long before there were so many people here, maybe long before there were any people there. It's very ancient and very interesting. And there's a heronry over there, so that's a place where herons have their nests. It's, and it connects to trails and all the way south and all the way north, massive amounts of of trail trails for a lot of uses, you know? There are a lot of bikes that speed by me while I'm sauntering along, pulling out my binoculars. So so I think, I like to think about connectivity, and I'm very invested in connectivity in terms of terms of how, how, one, one little piece of open space is not connectivity. There are, as there will be, avifauna, which is what, what is the term for birds, and, and then the fauna who are connected to the ground, and they can find dens there, and the birds can find nests, and everybody can find food, and, and on a long, a larger scale, just, just as a piece of open space is not connectivity.
Thank, and Ms. Hall, you are at your time, so if you wouldn't mind just wrapping up.
Oh, I never thought I could get out of my time. So I would be asking at some point if this, if this annexation went forward, that I would be asking city council to put a gate back and get rid of the Burlington Barrier. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mona Lisa Young.
My name is Mona Lisa Young, and I am at 11820 Flatiron Drive. I'm a member of the Immaculate Conception Social Justice Committee and a part of Together Colorado. I appreciate all the things that I've heard tonight from everyone who is opposed to this project. However, I would like to see this project move forward. The reason why I'd like to see this project move forward is because I would like to address some of the problems that we have here in Lafayette. First, affordable housing. This project will give us the opportunity to have affordable housing, more affordable housing here in Lafayette, something that is definitely needed. There are so many people who would like to live in Lafayette, our teachers, our nurses, our doctors, our police officers, our firefighters, who cannot live in this area because of housing cost. This project would not only help fund that, but it will provide some of the needed housing that we need. So I've talked about, everyone's talked about an either/or. So where we have no open space, nothing is in this plan to make sure that we do have wildlife protection, but we can do that. We should not take an either/or approach to this, but a more measured approach of building this project. Everyone should have a voice in this, and we all should decide how this project should move forward, not just the developers, not just the council, and not just citizens. We have to work together as a unit to make sure that we do what we need for our community. So one of the problems that I was seeing is that, you know, you're talking about how is this gonna impact the climate. One of the things of Together Colorado is that we do have climate initiatives. That's part of what we stand for, that everyone can live with dignity and have a place to live, have food to eat, have medical care, education, and climate concerns. That's one of the parts that we work and strive to make sure that everyone has access to this. When working with Willoughby Corner, the affordable housing unit that was built, it has a carbon neutral, and it's carbon neutral. So that means that we're not producing any more carbon or emissions to have this development. You talk about traffic and so forth, a traffic study has to be done before this project even get off the ground. So there are things that we can do to make sure that it does work, and it works for us, not just for some, but for all. So what I'm saying to you, when you're looking at this and you're saying, "I don't want this, I don't want that," you have to think about more than just, you know, what our, our future needs are, but what our immediate needs are as well. We need the tax revenue from these projects. Now, you know, the, the problem is, this will, this piece of property will be developed, whether we develop it now or in the future. It's going to happen. Are those tax dollars are gonna stay here in Lafayette, or do we send them to Erie? So, you know, think about this when you start saying what you want and what you don't want. These are things that, that are going to happen, unfortunately, and why can't we have a say on how it happens? So, this is all I have to say. I have more to say, but, you know, at this point, this is just the beginning of the process. There is no reason why this should not move forward, how it is, they have made, you know, all the things that they need to do to move the project forward. So there is, the next steps will happen, whether we want them to or not, they will happen. And so we just have to decide how we want this to happen. So, that's my say, and I will be speaking again, and I will be saying, "Let's move this forward," because we need this for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we get to our, I think, our final speaker, I just want to reiterate, if any folks brought in materials for council to, to review, please make sure you have a copy for the applicant as well, and they're sitting right here in the front row. We want to make sure that they have all the information that council has as well. It'd be helpful. Thank you. Next up, we have Julie of Vulcans. She might have left. Okay, I'm not seeing Ms. Vulcans here, but if, yeah. So I'm not seeing any more in front of me, but it looks like we have some other folks that would like to speak, so if you wouldn't mind passing, passing them on. Right to me, thanks, Larry. Next up, we have Lurie Wilcox. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Thanks. I live at, oh, Lurie Wilcox, I live at 209 East Cleveland Street, so I'm very, very close to this proposed development. I live in the Culgreen House, which is on the National Historic Landmark. It's my second National Historic Landmark house that I've owned and preserved and worked very hard to keep.
Lurie, I don't want to cut you off, I apologize, but during this time, you're addressing the council and not the applicant?
Okay, I'll address you for that. And then I do want to address the developers. So I'm, I love my house, and I love Lafayette, and I love that I'm able to preserve a part of Lafayette. I'm opposed to the annexation of this open land. And the reason why I was addressing, addressing the developers, because in the meeting that we had over at the other space, was they said that this is infilling. This is not infilling at all. It doesn't meet the definition of infilling, which is buildings constructed to occupy the space between existing ones. Infilling in Lafayette would be developing the old Lafayette Florist greenhouses or the closed King Supers. So, in addition to what the last speaker said, yeah, maybe there could be some give and take here. Move the development to where it is actually infilling, where it does meet those requirements. I, I oppose it for all of the things everyone else does. It's taking away wildlife homes, land that can grow food, mowing down plants that provide oxygen for all of us and food for wildlife. It will create heat sinks full of concrete and asphalt and so much more damage to our habitat. We don't want this land developed. We want it open. We want that open corridor for the wildlife. If you feel, Texas developers, the need to develop in our state, then look at true infilling only. I oppose this development because we need to keep our open space and have less urban sprawl.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, are, are there any other speakers and, any other folks in person that wish to speak during this time? I'm gonna double check to see if there are any callers online. Looks like there are no callers online. Doesn't, oh.
I haven't filled out a form or anything.
Do you mind speaking and then filling one out afterwards?
Sure.
Thank you.
I haven't planned it, but I'm always happy to chat.
For sure.
My name's Glenn Kitnick. I live one block in on Chester Street from the field. My house abuts the field, one of the lavender, sad, she's not here anymore, but I'm pretty sure she mentioned that field, that abuts it. They put 15 duplexes and nine single-family homes on it. We still do the same thing. I had a dog, and I still have a dog, and we walk down the end of the street to the field every day. I'm not, I was never in love with the barrier, as she calls it, and I never called it that. It's a fence to me. But I understood it. My, it's my favorite, my dog's favorite thing to run from one side to the other, never on the path, always in the field. But I get it. You know, there were a group of coyotes, there were definitely some kids I saw out there every single day milling about out there. So the fence was erected for that, to keep the coyotes in. Ever since the little field behind my house was developed, I have yet to see the coyotes in my backyard. I hear them, and they were gone for about a year or so, but I feel like they're back, or at least they're back somewhere around here, because I hear them every single night. And I like all of my neighbors in that development. They're all nice people, at least the ones I know. Like I said, I chat, everyone walks by my house and I chat. And I almost long for the days when those coyotes would eat my cat that would leave and, and leave out my dog door and not know any better, and I would lose a cat that way. Well, I'm never gonna have that again, which is nice for the cat. But I feel like that was a big loss, you know? They, they, and I know the owner of the land, and I know why they wanted to sell, and they had every right and reason to do it. They could have got more out of it. But it changed, what I felt was that neighborhood, the subsidence thing that, that someone mentioned. I mean, that was a big deal. You know, that car was lying in there, you could look up, you know, it was, it was pretty far down, almost a perfect square covered the whole thing. That was my backyard. The wildlife that we get down there, everyone plays on that. We get a lot of wildlife. You see eagles. I see owls up by Lafayette Elementary a lot at night, too, because we wander around, my dog and I. No one else wants to walk with me. So I feel like that, that will change. The wildlife, that little hole will exist, like she says, you only have one, one open space without surroundings, but hundreds of apartments isn't going to connect through that, that wildlife. I look at the connections as, it needs to be for wildlife on feet, not just avian, and those connections aren't going to be there anymore. And even an open gate isn't gonna help that. I know, because just the, the 15 duplexes that roll up to the back of my house and the single-family homes, I don't see the foxes anymore. I don't see as many wild birds there anymore, and I just, it's just not the same. The subsidence issue is there, the wildlife issue is there. I know there's gonna be traffic mitigation before a development goes. But the level of traffic mitigation that people are willing to accept that plan these things is very different than the person that's sitting in the traffic. You know, I'm, I, I don't know if anyone notices, but from Boulder to I-25, at certain times of the day, it's really one line the whole way. You get stopped at a light, and it looks like it's empty, but you're right behind that next car again by the next light. And this, I mean, imagine, the Willoughby one took enough, what, a couple hundred cars? I'm not even sure what carbon neutral is, because those lights are on every night. And I don't know if anyone looks up at the sky, which is kind of nice at night in the dark areas, but it's not that dark anymore. You can't walk down to that area that used to be the dark area, for me, at least, and now it's well lit. And it's nice that you can walk there at night, because it's well lit. It's nice that they did that, they put lighting on the other side of baseline where the senior housing is, or what I, I was thinking the senior housing was, not Willoughby. In terms of affordable housing, I mean, maybe we should drill down and see how much was really affordable, how many teachers have moved into Willoughby, how many police officers and how many locals that couldn't afford here are able to move into Willoughby. Affordable housing these days is a half a million dollars. That's not that affordable. I know, you know, I have a kid, he complains all the time, even though he's not looking for houses, he complains. So the basic idea for me is that hundreds of houses is a change. Whether it connects or whether it doesn't connect, it's not the right amount for that area. If you were to develop on that area, a gateway is not, is not hundreds of houses. That is not just Lafayette's backyard, side yard, whatever he had said, you know, there's 15 entrances to Lafayette. That's everyone here's backyard, even the people opposed, even the people pro. It's all of our backyards, and that's gonna change. It's not just some kitty set in the backyard that, that wants to be put there. I don't think it was in anyone's plan, city or state or anyone's plan, that hundreds of homes should go there, or apartments, or, they're not gonna be high rises, but they may be two, four stories. That is not where the gateway from the east to Lafayette should look like.
And thank you, sir, you're at your time.
Where's the phone?
Uh, just to the, right over there. Okay. Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right. So it looks like I'm not seeing any more speakers online or in person, so with that, we will close public input and then invite the applicant, if they choose to do so, to respond to anything, if you would like. If not, we can move forward. Okay. All right. Then next up would be council discussion and possibly a motion if there is one. So I just want to hear thoughts from council as we give folks maybe a minute to transition out. By the way, we will be taking a short break after, after the discussion and vote, but, yes, so we can open up to council, but let's give folks a minute to transition out of here, actually.
No, we're good. You can give that copy. We have a plenty.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So now we're on the council discussion. We can, can we get the motion language just on the screen so it's available there? I want to see if council has any, any questions or comments regarding this topic. No? Counselor Sampson? Sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think having all the public input is very helpful for everyone. I'm, I'm sure the applicant gets that opportunity to hear what the public is thinking about this at the beginning of the process. It certainly is information that is good to have as you're moving through the process. This just happens to be the first step, and the only thing before us tonight has to do with, is the application for annexation. Does it meet what's in the state law?
No, thank you. Mayor Portman?
Um, I was just gonna say, I do appreciate the public coming out this evening, but again, I think Counselor Sampson kind of hit the nail on the head that this is the beginning of a process that simply looks at the annexation and if, there's very fine criteria. So I would encourage members of the public to continue to engage with developer meetings and even outside if available, and share your opinions, but also I would encourage you to come with solutions or what, what somebody asks. I would say this to everybody that ever talks about development and has some issues, because at some point, I think you will see development forward. I know that when we talk about potential open space, there, there is a cost to that, you know? And I think that when you look at what the average purchase price of the open space that we purchased the other parcels, you're looking at a pretty big hill decline, because we significantly invested in open space. So that's just something to keep in mind as well. But that's all I would just do, is encourage the public to continue to engage with the developers. So, thank you, Mayor.
And as a reminder, depending on how tonight goes, the next step would be the Planning Commission Annexation Hearing, another opportunity for, for public comment, and then, depending on how that goes, then they would come back to the city council, to us, for the actual annexation hearing. During that, during, all those meetings will be publicly noticed, so you all have an idea of when they're happening, and that does give more time for folks to reach out to the city council or to the applicant, to staff, whomever, to share your thoughts and opinions on the annexation of this property. All right. Someone feels ready to make a motion? Do so.
So, I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-30, making certain findings of fact regarding eligibility for annexation of properties generally located northwest and southwest of the intersection of Baseline Road and North 119th Street, located in Boulder County, Colorado, Gateway Lafayette Annexation.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. None opposed, that is unanimously, thank you. All right, the city council will take a short five-minute break before the next hearing, that way folks have time to transition in and out. Thank you.[616.25]
So, thank you for your patience tonight. We are on back to regular business, beginning with item L. This is a public hearing for resolution number 2025-32 approving a special use review to allow an indoor recreational club or facility, approving a parking modification, and approving an amendment to the Summit Marketplace PUD for Lot 1 located at 480 North Highway 287 with conditions as noted in the Daily Camera. We have our planning and building director here to get us started.
Good evening, Council. Stephen Williams, planning and building director. As the mayor stated, we have resolution 2532 to consider tonight. It is related to Vasa Fitness. The special use review is related to their proposed fitness or indoor recreation use. The parking modifications also more triggered by our code, which we'll get into. And then because they have an existing planned development, that is what we're amending to reflect these changes. So just as the last agenda item will begin with staff introduction and then turn it over to the applicant for their presentation, staff will go over a brief analysis and then council will have opportunity for questions before public testimony, council discussion, and a motion. So, the applicant is Vasa Fitness. They are looking to occupy the former King Supers Building at the northeast corner of 287 and baseline. The zoning is C1. It is an adaptable commercial designation in the comp plan. The building is currently still owned by Kroger, so Vasa would be leasing the space from them. And under our current C1 zoning, recreation facility use triggers a special use review, which is something that went to planning commission. You're also considering and making the ultimate decision on that special use review, but planning commission did recommend approval. The parking modification is an exclusively city council action, and that is in order to reduce their parking by roughly 20% or just over 20%. So, the PUD amendment, the existing PUD is shown on the screen. Lot 1 is reflected here. It actually ends part of the way through the parking lot, and then it kind of traverses. It also splits the parking lot over here, and then it splits the access line or access line from Crossing Drive to the east. So, as I mentioned, in our current code, special use review is required for the indoor fitness facility. It's intended to address the intensity of a use, and we don't have anything that specifies new development from existing development, so the review criteria and analysis was somewhat abbreviated based on the fact that it's an existing building and going into and doesn't have any new construction impacts. And then the parking modification explicitly is triggered by the fact that our code requires one space for every 150 square feet of development for a rec use while it requires one for 200 square feet for the retail grocer. So there's a higher parking requirement for the new use. They are using a little bit less of that building, which we'll get into. It's 55,600 square feet, whereas the entire building's closer to 66,000 square feet. And then they will need a building permit. So this is not a, it's kind of an unusual application where it's not triggering a site plan and architectural review because no additional commercial square footage is proposed, but the building permit, because of the significance and the changes, they do have to meet, bring the use up to ADA compliance for parking and for access. And then the EV and PV requirements in our code are part of the building requirement. So through that building permit, there will be some limited site improvements as well. I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening. Thanks for having us up tonight to talk about this special use review. My name's Corey Chear. I'm the vice president of construction for Vasa Fitness. For those that don't know, Vasa Fitness, I want to kind of give you a quick who we are. Vasa Fitness is a high-value, low-price fitness club, and we offer our members an incredible value proposition with large, full-service clubs to help you live better. We offer top-of-the-line equipment, exercise machines, free weights, and a wide variety of group fitness and boutique-style classes, including our Studio Red, Studio Flow, Studio Lift, and many other amenities to help our members customize our personal fitness goals. We've expanded to eight states. We have 60-plus locations, and we've become one of the top 20 largest health club operators in the country. We have 15 existing Colorado locations. Number 16 will open in the Springs area in late July. Our typical location is an adaptive reuse of a big retail box similar to the former King Supers that we're in front of you guys with tonight. We wanted to reiterate, we have a 20-year lease term with Kroger with three five-year extensions. The build-out on this project is going to be north of $8 million. So there's a significant investment in both the building and the community for the city of Lafayette that we're excited about. On the special use criteria, like Stephen touched on, most of the areas we meet or exceed. Are we complying with the municipal code? Yeah, it's compatible with the surrounding areas, and the adaptive reuse of the existing vacant building will not require modifications that will alter the building's character from the others within the center. Is there any adverse environmental influences as a result of the proposed use? This is a typical commercial use. There's no additional impervious areas added to the site and no changes to the existing Is there a significant impact on traffic generation and parking? We had a traffic study completed by a licensed traffic engineer that has been produced and provides less impact than the previous use. The adaptive reuse provides a reduction of traffic of 70% from the previous use. Is there a significant intrusion of noise, light, dust, or glare into nearby properties? We have no outdoor activities with Vasa. Everything's contained within our four walls. The existing loading dock will be repurposed and not used at all. All of our deliveries go through the front doors, and trash collection will be at the same location but on a far lesser level than the grocery stores. Is there a significant increase in burdens on housing, schools, utility, or government services? No additional burdens at all. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 4:00 a.m. to midnight, and then less on the weekends. It's very similar to what the grocery store operating hours were. And finally, the parking modification. The recreation traffic analysis reduced trips by 70%. The Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Manual indicates max parking for a rec facility this size would be 290 spaces. We currently have 297 spaces with no shared parking agreements within the center required for parcel one. We're requesting that city council consider decreasing required parking by 22% to meet the needs of the traffic and parking analysis. That is all I have. If anybody had any questions now or you want to wait till the end?
After the staff analysis. Thank you.
So, the special use criteria are outlined in section 2615-4 of our code, and they're summarized here. They were summarized by the applicant, so I won't get into too much detail here, other than to kind of clarify that, you know, once an area like this is developed, the criteria of review kind of lessens, and the focus of this review was really on exterior impacts since everything is interior. We also included a, because of the definition in our code is technically indoor and outdoor recreation use, we included as a condition of approval that this is limited to the indoor use. They've said that they don't operate outside. There's no kind of CrossFit activity or anything like that going on in the parking lot or anywhere on the property. Everything's contained to the building. So really, our main focus was to clarify traffic and to clarify their parking needs, which they summarized already. So we're not going to find that, we don't find that there's additional impact. We will review lighting, that type of stuff, but intrusions are typically glare, dust, and things that are more associated with new construction or a heavier, like intensive use that actually has outdoor impacts. Their hours of operation are slightly different. They're about two hours earlier in the morning and one hour later at night than what King Supers was, but we're not expecting high. Their peak traffic occurs like normal morning hours closer to 7:00, 8:00 a.m. and then in the afternoon, so it's not really going to have a meritable impact on the use out here. I would say too that we had two people comment, I don't think we have anybody commenting tonight, we had two people comment at the planning commission meeting, and both were in support. One was a local resident who actually wanted this site to be filled again because he was more concerned about the vacancy, and then one was somebody that has frequent in a Vasa fitness studio in another location and just spoke to the quality. And then again, this is kind of redundant, but the parking modification does have different criteria, and we are focusing on that parking needs for non-dwelling uses or otherwise not residential uses, and that's where this same, same study, same kind of analysis goes into supporting the parking reduction. And then the only other kind of caveat or clarification there was that we do have some numbers out there, like the 339 that previously existed for King Supers. King Supers had a shared parking agreement with the rest of the development, and when we have an initial development, I think that those things are a little bit easier to coordinate. When we have somebody come in and there's multiple business owners and multiple property owners, it was a lot easier for Vasa to contain this to Lot 1, which is what they control, than to work with the number of other property owners out there and re-figure, reconfigure a parking agreement. Fortunately, they didn't have to because their need doesn't suggest that they need anything more than what's existing a lot long, so. So we're recommending approval. I feel like they have demonstrated both compliance with the special use review criteria and the parking modification. And then just to clarify again, that the PUD amendment will be updated to reflect both of these changes should they be approved by council tonight.
Thank you. All right, so does council have any questions either for staff or the applicant? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have, just so I can understand, how do we reduce the number of spaces? I've spent way too much time in that parking lot, so how do we, what does it look like to drop the number?
Oh, you mean like to actually get rid of them?
Yeah. Do you ask me?
So, they have 297 on their lot. Their study shows that the max that they would need on a weekend is 290, so there's no like real give. Like, what I was trying to explain before was that, like, there's parking over here and there's parking to the south, and previously, King Supers relied on a parking agreement to like share parking with those existing users. So there's the inline retail immediately to the east. I think that's on Lot 2. Kroger still owns the gas station, so if you're asking, what I think you're asking was just how do we get rid of parking if we don't need it? We're not doing it here because they need most of the remaining parking. That's on Lot 1, so.
So the other users just keep using?
Yeah, they'll have, they have theirs and yeah, they have.
They just don't need to add?
Yeah, they don't need it for the shared parking, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, and this is a public hearing. So I will open up a public input for this, this item here. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak regarding this topic? All right, I'm not seeing any person. Let me see if there are any callers online. I'm also not seeing any callers online, so with that, we will close public input, move forward to council discussion, and possibly a motion. Do you mind? Thank you. Yeah, no worries. Any other final comments, questions? Okay, if not, we'll take a motion. Someone feels ready?
I move to approve resolution number 2025-32 approving a special use review to allow an indoor recreational club or facility, approving a parking modification, and approving an amendment to the Summit Marketplace PUD for Lot 1 located at 480 North Highway 287 with conditions.
Second. Give a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you so much. That concludes regular business for tonight, which brings us to now some appointments, council appointments, beginning with item M. This is for the spring 2025 Board Commission and Committee appointments. We have our assistant to the city manager here to get us started.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. As mentioned, I have a very brief presentation for you this evening regarding the spring 2025 Board Commission and Committee appointments. You've all seen some version of this pretty recently, so we won't go too much into the background, but we'll also walk through these processes we used for the spring 2025 recruitment and then wrap up with some motion language for you. So as you'll recall, we came before you a number of times throughout 2024 with some program improvements to the Board Commission and Committee program, the largest of which was really transitioning to the semi-annual recruitment process, which was really focused around primary recruitment in the fall. But we did implement this spring recruitment process to fill any vacancies for boards and commissions that came up between that fall recruitment and now. And so what we used this year and what you see on the screen here is really a truncated version of that fall process, which began with a three-week application window from March 3rd to March 21st to solicit applications for vacancies on five boards and commissions. And then in April, those boards reviewed the applications, conducted interviews if needed, and determined recommendations, which we're presenting to you this evening and were included in your packet. And because these members are not starting new terms, they're filling vacancies on existing terms, these, anyone appointed tonight will effectively begin immediately. And just a quick note that this process, as you'll recall, does not apply to the youth advisory board because they follow a separate process to align with the school year. So there were five boards and commissions with vacancies that we were soliciting applications for in the spring process. One was the Cultural Arts Board, which did not receive any applicants, so there's four different board and commission appointments before you this evening. The first is one for the Historic Preservation Commission with a term ending November 30th of 2029. That's one regular member. The second is a one regular member for the Open Space Advisory Board, and that's filling a current vacancy so that, through the end of next, next November. Two regular members for the Mental Health and Human Services Grant Program Advisory Committee, and you'll recall this is, this committee was codified last year, and so we're kind of getting through that initial staggering of terms, so these, there were two members who, whose terms ended last year, and so this is filling those positions. And then the finally, finally is Senior Advisory Board with one regular member ending November of next year, and then one alternate member ending November of 2028. All of the information for the applicants is in your packet, including those who are recommended and those that were applied but not recommended for appointment. And so before, before turning it over for any motion language, do just want to walk through some next steps. So as mentioned, because these are not new terms, members appointed tonight will effectively be seated immediately. And then the Youth Advisory Board recruitment window, that opens on June 1st, and they are going to model a similar process we use for all the other boards and commissions by doing an open house the first week of their recruitment window, so that'll be on June 4th at the library at 6:30. And then before we know it, we'll be kicking off the fall recruitment process again, so that application will open on August 25th with an open house that first week of the recruitment. It'll close end of September, and then the boards will review and interview in October. We'll bring appointments to you in November. Interments will begin in December, and then we'll wrap up the year with the celebration of current and leaving members. So with that, we have motion language for you on the screen. If you'll recall, it's kind of unique to do this batch appointment, so we have one motion here. If there are no amendments to the recommendations in your packet, and if there are any recommendation or amendments to those recommendations, we have a separate slide with language that I'm happy to walk you through.
Sounds good. Thank you. All right, any questions or comments from council? Counselor Freed?
I just have a couple of questions about the process, how it went this time. You said we had one appointment for LCAB that didn't get filled because we had no interest. What was sort of demand like for the other positions? Were there, each of them, you know, was it overflowing? I know we've got a little in the packet, but like, give me the vibe.
Yeah, so I believe we had at least, at least one applicant per, for each vacancy for all the others, except for Historic Preservation Commission, if I'm recalling correctly.
Two. Two, and then one dropped out.
Okay.
Thank you. For example, the Mental Health and Human Services Committee, there were five applicants for two vacancies, so it really depended.
Depends on the, on the, on the board. How about in terms of incumbents versus new folks? Did you notice a trend or anything there as you put this together?
No.
Nothing stood out?
No trends stood out in terms of different, major differences from previous rounds.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, I just have a comment. The senior advisory board is really excited to have two new, two, two members on there that are filling them out, so they're excited about the, who it is and the fact they're filled.
Yeah, and you did, you also mentioned that there's one vacancy still on the LCAC or the Cultural Arts Commission.
At least one board, one vacancy on the Cultural Arts.
So hopefully folks can hear that and go out and apply. We'll take a motion if someone feels ready.
I move to approve, to appoint members to the Historic Preservation Commission, Open Space Advisory Board, Mental Health and Human Services Grant Program Advisory Committee, and Senior Advisory Board as presented in tonight's meeting packet.
Second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. All right, so next up, one hundred council appointments is item N. These are appointments to Lafayette Downtown Development Authority Board. I don't know, I don't think there's a presentation.
Yeah.
Okay. So as council may recall, it seems like we recently just made some of these appointments, and that's because we did. In March, in March, Counselor Barnes and I had recommended the appointment of several board members, but the way that the DDA board is managed and set up by the state, it is, it requires two members' term, two members' terms to expire on June 30th. And so because we made those appointments in March, we had to choose two of those members for their term to expire only after a couple of months. But as I mentioned, when we previously discussed this, the, my intention was to reappoint both of these members for a full four-year term, and so that's why these are back up, but the recommendations from previous are staying the same. Faith for one reappointment for Faith Rogers and one reappointment for Janay Lake, Janay Laco, both of, both of which have been doing great on the DDA board, and we see no issues with, at the end of, Counselor Barnes wants to add anything, but just would, you know, just tonight, we need to, we would like to reappoint them.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to say, I think it's really, this is, everything is moving well, and both of these members have already done a great deal, even though we've had two minutes, two meetings, and Janay's already on a subcommittee working with one of the other members. So, yeah, this is, this is great. I'm ready to second.
Awesome. Okay, for our attorney, would you like two separate motions or can we do them both at the same time?
You can do both at the same time.
Great. All right, so I will move to approve the following appointments to the Lafayette Downtown Development Authority, including Faith Rogers with a term expiring on June 30th, 2029, and Janay Laco with a term expiring on June 30th, 2029. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we'll wrap up tonight with, with reports, beginning with item O. This is the city attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything to report this evening.
Thank you. Onto the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So, I have a few items to report. As I provided in the Friday update, but I thought it was really important to also speak to the community, but give kudos to our staff, we received notice from the Government Finance Officers Association that we received the budget award for our 2025 budget. This is a significant achievement for the city and really highlights that our budget is not only legally compliant, but a very nationally recognized guideline for effective budget presentation. So just wanted to give a huge kudos. If you guys recall, we had a lot of staff turnover in the middle of the budget presentation, and so our interim CFO, Morgan Walton, and our budget analyst, Lori Horasta, really stood up and largely carried this over the finish line, which was no small feat, just so wanted to publicly acknowledge them and thank them for that. Also, we are approaching Memorial Day, which means a lot of facility closures, so instead of listing closures, I listed what is going to be open. So the Indian Peaks Golf Course will be open throughout the weekend, and then we are kicking off outdoor pool season. So the Great Outdoors Water Park will be opening this weekend. The Wanaka Lake will open June 1st, so it is still closed, but all other facilities, public facing facilities will be closed on Monday, July, or May 26th. And then next week, we'll be kicking off our annual and first-of-the-season picnic at the Plaza with Jeff and Paige. This also kicks off our summer reading program, so you can pick up your passports there or at the library or register online. And then we are close, if anyone drove down public today, you could see some noticeable changes, really close to finishing up the Starkey Building renovation. So flooring went in internally, but we are starting the outside paint, so if you haven't seen it, drive by. It's very noticeable and bright now, which is a nice addition to that festival plaza area. So our estimated finish date is June 4th, and we will be looking for kind of a ribbon-cutting date in the near future with council and the community. And then looking forward to the May 27th workshop, we'll be having a large discussion with our consultants on the capital bond exploration, both discussing the statistically valid survey, but also reporting out on the public engagement that are, the employees have done and the website has garnered. And then having a discussion on board commission and community potential code updates. And then June 3rd, we'll have a few proclamations, a public hearing. If you recall, you passed on first reading, but first day, you need to have a public hearing on the second reading for the model traffic code update, and then you will be, a applicant has been asked to have their sketch plan appealed, so you will be hearing that at June 3rd as well. That is for the silo development. So I have tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, we'll wrap up tonight with council reports. We can start down here. Counselor Tapia Vega?
No reports. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sampson.
No reports.
Thank you, Counselor Freed.
This is going to be quick. I was invited by the open space chair, who spoke tonight, Grant, to do a little tour of our open space all around our city, and so delightful, oh my goodness. Anyway, if anyone's interested, I'm sure he would love to give you a tour as well.
I think he emailed us with his info.
Oh, okay.
If his folks on council do want to reach out.
Yeah, he is an absolute treasure of information and a delight to be around, so if you have some time, I highly recommend it. He can, you know, fit it into your schedule, and it was just a really nice way to spend a morning, so appreciate that from Grant, and just really appreciated, you know, our open space and our community in the past that we have done as a community to buy open space. It really makes his place really special, so that's all.
My fifth grade teacher.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Right? Yeah.
Mayor Burtson?
Just a couple, one thing, actually, one thing is subdivided. Dr. Cog is tomorrow night, and as a question, and I don't know if we should be doing here during a workshop, but their awards ceremony is on August 27th, Wednesday night. We did nominate, were up for nomination for one of their awards, and I'm just wondering if city council would be willing to spend $1,200 to get eight seats at the Dr. Cog event or awards ceremony in August. I know that we've done it in the past, we haven't done it recently, but we've done it in the past, so just wanted to get a poll or see if we can move forward with that. I don't know, Mayor, if it's now or a new idea.
No, I think we can do it now. You know, I know we've had some, we've, we've kind of had some discussions regarding our contingency fund, and I think we did establish kind of moving some of those funds to other initiatives, but there's still a good chunk remaining, like, like 27,000, I think, so around that range for, for just things, ad hoc things that come up like this, and so wanted to see council's thoughts on Mayor Burtson's proposal of purchasing a table for the Dr. Cog event. Do we have?
I think in the past, what we said is we had people.
Commit.
Come in and commit because 12 seats may be too many. And I've been at meetings or events where there's a table and there's only two people or four people sitting at a large table, and so it can be kind of disappointing if you're up presenting at that to empty tables. So I would say, let's make sure if we're going to pay for something, we make sure we use it.
Okay. I think, so it looks like it's a table for eight, and so I think what we can do is, if you wouldn't mind, just polling council to see who's available for the, for that event, but I think we could give, you know, staff direction, if we can fill those seats, to purchase those seats, to purchase the full table. And then... And then if council members aren't available to make it, can we open up to city staff? Okay. Yeah, I think if we could just poll the council, see who's available, who's not. And then do, can you remind us of those dates? The dates?
It would be the 27th of August, 6:00 PM at the Sewell Ballroom Downtown.
That's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday night.
That's downtown Denver?
Downtown Denver. They have a social evening and then they do have the awards program and it's usually narrated by somebody from one of the television stations, so. It's a pretty, it's a pretty big deal that we've been nominated for, potentially, I think it's Willoughby Corner, so.
And for the commuting solutions, breakfast, thank you, we opened the table up, the legislative breakfast, two board and commission members after city staff, then board and commission members to make sure we fill all the seats.
Yeah, so I think we should be able to fill it then. Okay, do you mind sending out a council email? Thank you so much.
Is there a deadline to commit?
It's usually, it's far, far off, it's at least a month or two away. But I'll send, I'll send this out so you know when the awards ceremony is, I've got that information on it. Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
All right, Counselor Gallegos?
So the Lafayette Youth Advisory Board is seeking new students to join for a one-year term beginning on September 2025. So we're looking for middle and high school students ages 11 through 18 who live in Lafayette or attend a Lafayette school to come join us. If you'd like more information, please join us at the open house on June 4th at 6:30 in the library.
Let's get some Centar's kids in there too. Thanks. Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to report that the Senior Advisory Board met last week and wanted everyone to know that there is a world elder abuse presentation at the Senior Services Center on June 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM and of course, it's free and open to the community. And they also wanted people to know that you do not have to be an elder to attend the presentation, to get an idea of something about that. They also received a presentation and conversation and discussion with our deputy city manager and new director of the community
Services?
Community Services on the bond issues and they, they had a long conversation and some of their concerns were about the bond, the cost to that on people with older adults and with fixed incomes, but they also were lucky to have Chair Walton and our city staffer, Dana Hoffman, to help them understand that it looks like it would be around $296 a year increase. And they were able to do the math to see what that would look, look like to them because I was one of the, you know, they were worried about the cost, you know, about this coming up. They also were concerned about the, the difference of change in space and were interested in understanding if whether or not the amount of space available to seniors would change. And of course, we don't have the answers to all of these yet, but those are some of the concerns that they had. And the other was, oh, that they just wanted council to know that one of the really important services that the Senior Services Center provides is helping with isolation, with seniors, sorry, older adults who are feeling a sense of isolation and that's one of the, that's probably the number one way to help people age better in places to address the feelings of isolation. And then moving on to the DDA, we did walk through the history of what Laura has done and in our last meeting and looked at all of the different types of investments that Laura is hoping that the DDA would take on. And Director Keating was very good at helping us understand the difference between a URA and a DDA and we, our next meeting, we'll have it, we're having a readjust, but we'll have a consultant to help us understand what other DDAs have done. And we walked through some of what we could potentially do as a DDA and how that would wrap around the current status of what's going on in the city. So DDA directors are still moving forward and understanding more of what the role of the DDA and their own personal role would be. We did get public comment, another person to bring public comment, it was specifically about the number of bikes lined up along the side of the farmer's market. So I understand our sustainability director is already looking at the concept of a bike corral in order to corral all those bikes in a way that still promotes people using an alternative form of transportation to get to citywide events. So that's one of the discussions that we had and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and for me, as, as many folks have in the community already seen, the city of Lafayette did make the decision to enter into a joint lawsuit with, with other municipalities like the city of Arvada, Aurora, Glendale, Westminster and Greenwood Village. And we did this in response to some of the, a package of housing-related bills that were passed by the state of Colorado last legislative session. And, you know, as the city council evaluated sort of the, how those bills would be implemented here in the city, we felt like it was a bit of an overreach or overstep in, in violation of our home rule authority here in the city of Lafayette. And so we joined these other municipalities to share that, in, to share that, you know, we do oppose those measures that were passed last, last session. And the city council believes that a majority, a large majority of the public here in the city are supportive of that decision to enter into that lawsuit. And so, you know, just wanted to put that on the record. We've already had a lot of folks reach out with questions and thoughts on the matter, but it seems like in general, our community is supportive of this decision. The city council is doing everything we can in our power to protect and serve our residents in the best way possible. And so we, we do hear you, our community, we do value your opinions. We'll see how this thing goes, but as of right now, we felt like that was the best decision to make. All right, we do have a brief executive session to get to tonight and so I will move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to sections 24-6-4024A and 24-6-4024E for the Colorado, Colorado revised statutes. One, to discuss the potential sale of city-owned real property located in the West Bridge filing number one subdivision in the city of Lafayette. And two, for the purposes of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators with respect to the potential sale of such property. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. This, that passes unanimously. The city council will adjourn to executive session and will return to an open meeting. The time is now 9:04 PM. Thank you.